I'm saying, you know, if it takes them four hours or six hours to clean up, you know, they need to charge them like, you know, fifty dollars an hour to clean up.
Oh, the rental is from the time they walk in and the time they leave.
Right. But if afterward they leave it a mess and somebody comes in then.
Well, but the tenant's doing the job.
Right.
But she said, uh, she's gonna start going with every tenant going over there and saying, this is the wish to have. They make it too much count. They said, how do we make it count? Maybe five tenants, the first time they ever do that. After that, it's gonna take them two more. That's the people that come in, but they need to.
All right, it's six o'clock, folks. Let's get this party started. So at six o'clock, I call the meeting of the Saginaw City Council Order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a true republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item three is the invocation. For that, Pastor Ronnie Mills, Kingdom Chapel, welcome. Come on up. Thank you for coming out, sir.
Thank you for having me. If you would, let's pray. Father, I just want to say what a privilege it is to be here tonight to pray over the events that are gonna transpire in a few moments. Father, I thank you for the leadership that's in this room and, Father, for all they do for this city. Uh, Father, I thank you for the city of Saginaw and this place that we call home here on earth temporarily. Father, I pray that all that's done will be done to your glory, for your good and just, and I pray that you would be with us tonight as decisions are made and discussion is had. Father, we love you. I pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, audience participation on the screen as well, but if there's an item you wish to speak on, please see the city secretary fill out one of these forms. If it is a public hearing, when I call a public hearing, you are allowed to speak at any time. You don't need to go through, oh, there's another, we don't need to go through the city secretary for that. So we are allowed to discuss any and all items that are on this agenda. So please feel free. I'd like to welcome folks watching at home and watching online. I hope the audio and video quality is good and you can hear and see us. I'd love some feedback on what you can see and hear online, so somebody, I hope somebody's listening as well or watching, so, welcome, welcome all. Item four, consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of September 1st. B is action regarding appointment of crime patrol and branch of district board of directors. C is action regarding resolution 2021 annual improvement approval of investment policy. D is action regarding accreditation agreement with American Public Works Association for voluntary accreditation. E is action regarding minimum understanding with Tarrant County, Pennsylvania, and Urban Counties Tech Share Juvenile Program. F is action regarding authorization or award for contract for Saginaw Boulevard's 16-inch water line, phase two. Any questions, concerns on the consent agenda? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion? We agree to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Charles, take it. All those in favor raise your right hand. With the record in effect, we do have a quorum. Uh, Councilmember Farr is unable to join us this evening. Item number five. Hold on. Item five is consideration in action regarding approval of preliminary plat for UCD Saginaw Audition Lot 1 through 8. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall, almost exactly a year ago, you approved zoning for this plat property that's located on the, excuse me, on the southwest corner of FM 156 and Bailey-Boswell Road. Uh, the developers proposing to subdivide this now into eight lots. Uh, the first seven will be the community commercial lots that will be located along Bailey-Boswell and, uh, FM 156, and then to the rear of the property, uh, the community commercials, I mean, the multifamily MF2, uh, property, uh, is proposed as Lot 8. Uh, the plan zoning commission met last week and unanimously recommended that that be forwarded to council for approval. Clay Christie's here tonight to try to answer any questions that, uh, you might have.
Counsel, questions? Welcome, sir. How you doing?
Doing well. Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, 1903, Central Drive, Bedford, Texas. Rick did a great summation of the project that we have here. Um, we were here about a year ago, like we said, in front of you guys with the zoning. Um, we, now that the zoning's in place, we've been moving forward with construction and engineering drawings. We have a preliminary plat here for you for the overall, uh, that is still in general compliance and the same, uh, configuration as the site plan that was originally presented. Um, and we're setting this up for our first phase of development. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Lot 3, talk about the floodplain easement. I know that's a low area. Can you just talk about how that's gonna work out and the plans for that, that corner?
On that corner, uh, yeah, so there, essentially, there's, there's floodplain in that corner right there, and so unfortunately, we're not gonna have a hard corner, uh, prime development spot right there, but just as, uh, we presented that overall site plan originally with you guys, that took into account the, the floodplain easement and the floodplain, so, um, the site plan that was presented to you guys about a year ago still incorporates that and accounted for all the floodplain within that area for the development, and so the buildings and the parking lot in that area will be set significantly back off of the hard corner of Bailey-Boswell and 156.
Now, will there be any retention down there as well?
There will not be.
Okay.
No, we, we've ran the hydraulic analysis, we've, we've worked with Kim Lee Horn and all their group in, uh, analyzing the impacts of the drainage and the improvements there and, uh, with the text dot changes that are gonna be going along, along 156, and all of our drainage studies are gonna be mapped out that way.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, other questions? Anything? All right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. All right, if no other questions on this, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat for UCD Saginaw Audition Lots 1 through 8, Block A.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Moving along, item number six, consideration action regarding approval of a site plan for Alliance UCD Saginaw Audition Lot 8, Block A. For that, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. The same piece of property as Clay mentioned, uh, their first phase will be the multifamily to the rear. Uh, prior to issuance of a building permit, they're required to have a site plan approval by city council in addition to a final plat, which will be forthcoming, so, uh, unless you have any questions for me for that, uh, the, the site plan's been coordinated through all the city departments and the city engineer meets exceeds all the requirements required in Section 8.1, Site Plan Requirements of the Zoning Ordinance. And Mr. Christie?
Thank you, sir. Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, 1903, Central Drive, Bedford, Texas. Um, just as we said with the preliminary plat, this is the first phase that we have presented before you guys. Um, we've worked with city staff to make sure that the site plan that we have before you guys is in compliance with the zoning that we've got approved with you guys last year, and so here we are obtaining that so that we can move forward with this development. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
So it's my understanding the only egress will be onto 156 of Blue Mound Road, not onto Bailey-Boswell?
There, there's actually, um, there'll be four points of access for the overall site, just as in compliance with the overall site plan. There's one access over to Bailey-Boswell, um, which, in, you can kinda see it if you're on the screen, on the far left-hand side right there, you can see grade back. Um, the site plan's just zoomed in on there, but there's an access drive that goes out there. There's actually a median break already in place whenever Kim Lee Horn, uh, worked on the access on that, uh, on that location, so there's already a median break for that access onto Bailey-Boswell, and then there'll be three access points along 156. Um, two of those access points along 156 will be right in, right out only, and then the, uh, the third and the main entrance will have a hooded left coming in off of 156. That has all been coordinated with text dot, conceptually approved, and we are awaiting the text dot permit any day.
I notice as well, we're doing a monument sign, proposed monument sign with the arches, the hooded arches, as you mentioned.
Correct.
Which is great. I like that. Counsel, other questions? Yeah? No other questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the site plan for Alliance Saginaw UCD Saginaw Audition Lot 8, Block A.
Cindy second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven, so at 6:10, we're in a public hearing. Presentation of Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2020-2021. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We've, um, been through multiple budget workshops and budget reviews, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have. This is, um, a required public hearing to hear from anyone who wants to speak on the proposed budget. I have no formal presentation unless you want me to do one, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll leave that up to counsel. Counsel, what, uh, what questions do you have for Kim on this? As you mentioned, we have gone through this budget several times, so you should be pretty familiar with it, but what questions do we have at this point? Or what would you like to maybe highlight on the budget that we are about to approve? One thing you would, would like you to highlight or just mention is, can you tell us the, um, we are including an adjustment for salaries for staff? Will you discuss that as well and how we got to that point?
Sure. We've, we've got, um, I guess the things that are added to the budget, it's very bare-bones this year, as we've discussed, um, on more than one occasion. Um, the big increase, I guess, would be the 3% adjustment to salaries. The other, um, big items that are included in the general fund budget are one-time items. There's the 2.6 million for the Bailey-Boswell Overpass Project. There's $150,000 in there for Saginaw Boulevard redevelopment. All of these are coming from fund balance. Um, there's the Phase 3B of the ADA Study, which would be the second part of the intersection, um, study for Americans with Disability Act. There's $32,000 in there for a parks master plan. There's $29,000 for a public works service truck replacement, and then, um, an amount, uh, $6,800 for the second part of the public works accreditation, um, which you just approved the first part of it in the consent agenda. So there will be more than one payment made during that process. So those are the big items in there in the general fund budget.
And there's also includes the CCP, the CCPD fund that we just approved prior to this meeting.
Right.
Uh, so there's a lot, lot in this. Um, like I said, I don't wanna walk through everything, 'cause we've been through it so much, but anything else counsel wants to question or highlight or, uh, before I open it up for any, uh, comments from the, the audience? Anything else, counsel? Nothing else? Okay. Good. And, and Kim, I wanna say it's a, oh, Gabe, you've got to, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just, um, Councilmember Farr, as you're aware, is not with us this evening. Uh, happy to report that, uh, he's recovering with his wife Misty at home from COVID-19. Um, I have some statements on a number of items from him that will read to the record, so I can do that at any time, after the public hearing or now, whenever you'd like.
Sure, read it right now on this, this item.
Okay, so on item seven, uh, and I'm reading directly, a copy was sent to the city attorney and the council and the city secretary. Uh, "Thank you, staff, specifically Kim Quinn and department heads for your work in preparing a budget consistent with our long-range financial plan. I support the proposed budget with revenues consistent with long-range financial plan rate of 46.1579 cents."
Okay. And I as well wanna thank Kim for this, this, a lot of work goes into this budget. We are, we're skimming over the, the very top of it, but it's, a ton of work has been done by staff, especially Kim, coordinating that in the last several months, and I really appreciate it. It's, it's well done. We were going into this budget season, we were not sure what we would be at, where we would be because of, uh, all the changes and, um, TAD and sales tax and everything else. We've turned out better than we could have hoped. Uh, we were very fortunate, uh, so, so far, so good, but, uh, I appreciate the, the hard work from staff, so I just won't let that, I say that. Anything else, counsel? Um, this, this is a public hearing, uh, on the budget, so anyone in the audience wish to speak, now's the time. You don't have to, don't say anything, you can just approach the mic and, uh, say your piece. This is a public hearing, so it's open to any and all who would like to say anything. Absolutely, Ms. Stewart. Go ahead.
That's pretty bad when you know my name. Kelly Stewart, 404 Mustang Drive, Saginaw. And phone number, is that right?
No, no.
No, that's it. What did you say was the, 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 for the parks?
There's a, there's, um, $32,000 in there for a parks master plan.
Okay. $32,000. Uh, for some reason, I wrote down a million, and I thought, I don't think I did that right.
Yeah, it's just a plan. It's not.
Okay, yeah, I put down plan.
And we did a parks master plan, how many years ago, Charlie? Charles? Five, five or six?
Seven or eight.
Seven years ago?
Okay.
Yeah. Any other comments? Questions, comments, anything? And if you're listening at home and you have questions after this meeting, please contact staff. Uh, Gabe, Rayam, our city manager, be happy to sit down with you and talk over the budget. We'll walk through anything as well. This is all gonna be posted on our website, very transparent. This is what it is, this is what we're, we're doing for the citizens, so, I'd like everybody to be comfortable with it. If there are no other comments, then at 6:16, I take us out of a public hearing. Now, this was presentation, so no action is required on this item, correct? Mr. All right. Make sure I'm, I'm right.
Yes, this, the, the following item is the action item.
Right. So moving on to item number eight, consideration action regarding Resolution 2020-23, adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2020-21.
And Mayor, may I mention as well, that state law requires this vote to be a record vote. That doesn't necessarily change the way that you vote, but simply that the city secretary was required to record how each of you vote with respect to this budget.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you. And there are, just for the audience to know, there are a lot of hoops we have to jump through that are state law for budgets. Um, they're very, very specific on things we have to take, posting notices in the paper, all those different things, just to make sure it's a transparent process, so. Uh, so on this item, any questions on this? Any question on the budget? If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-23.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the action for 2020-23, adoption of budget fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
Thank you, Father. Sir, I'll second. All right. If there's no other questions, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, excellent. Thank you. So that was item number, I wanna make sure I'm keeping up with all my numbers, 'cause these are all the same.
Number nine.
We're on number nine, right? Okay. Item number nine, consideration action regarding ratify the adopted 2020-2021 fiscal year budget. Brent, will you explain what ratify means?
Certainly. This is the opportunity for you all to vote a second time on the exact same issue. You can say final answer if you'd like. The state law requires that you ratify the budget if it proposes to raise more revenue than last year's budget, which this does.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Yes, ma'am.
And just wanna make sure that this is perfectly clear, we're not doing anything with the tax rate at this particular time.
That, that's correct. You're simply voting on the budget a second time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion for.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, just one comment, uh, from Councilmember Farr on this item. It's, uh, similar to the previous. The comment was, "I support the ratification of the budget with revenues consistent with the long-range financial plan rate 46.1579 cents."
Okay, thank you. Now, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consideration in action to ratify the adopted 2021 fiscal year budget.
Not seconded.
Sir, I'll second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? There aren't. Thank you. Item number 10, and at 6:19, we're in a public hearing. I didn't forget. Thank you, Brent. Brent's job is to keep me out of prison. Um, so, we're in a public hearing for item number 10, consideration action regarding ordinance 2020-19, adopting and setting a property tax rate for the 2021 tax year.
Mayor, I think the public hearing's at item 11.
No, it's 10 as well. David?
We're required by state law to hold a public hearing for this, and the city has advertised it, it just simply doesn't indicate on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're in a public hearing. This is the tax rate of which we, we questioned before, so. Kim Quinn? Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, we discussed, um, advertising at the 46.3280 tax rate, um, because that was the higher tax rate. The vote was 4.3. We need five votes to approve a tax rate. The other rate under consideration is, um, the one that Mr. Farr has, um, proposed, which is the 46.1579 rate. The slide that I have up here shows the difference between the two as far as the taxes on an average home and how much of an increase that would be per month.
So walking through, our current rate is 459.
That's correct. 459, the average house in the current year is 178,105. Next year, the average residential, um, average home would be, is 188,100. Taxes in the current year on the average home were $817.50. At the 461579 rate, they would go up to $868 a year. Under the 463, it would be 871, $871.43.
Okay.
And then the next two, next two bullets show the increase per month.
Counsel, questions? Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, the two tax rates that are being considered, as you can see up on the screen, would result in a difference of 27 cents per month, up or down, depending on which one we approve. So we've already made it clear that we all realize that is such an insignificant amount of money that it's really not worth discussing. However, the reason, so what that made me realize is that real, we are really debating a philosophy of the budget and how we look at the budget, particularly as it relates to our financial plan. And I am of the opinion that the .463280 allows us to not be a slave to these estimated amounts on this financial plan. Um, I went back two or three days ago and watched last year's meeting when this financial plan was, was presented to us by our financial consultant, just to make sure I understood it clearly, and one of the first statements that he made was that he stressed the fact that if nothing else, he wants to make sure that a city council's ability to be flexible is never taken away from them. He also talked about this as a game plan and a tool. If we pick, if we choose the 461 rate, the only reason that was suggested was so that we could hit perfectly to the dollar, um, this levy of $10,185, $185,294. This is an estimate. It is based on last year's tax rate. I think it is a bad precedent to set, to hold ourselves to this item. He goes on to show through 2032, and in every instance, he uses last year's tax rate. He had to use last year's tax rate. It, we can't predict the future. There are many financial situations that will come up every year that might make it, might make us able to lower the tax rate, it might require us to increase the tax rate. If we, uh, adopt the 461, it will also necessitate us to go back and change line items in the already presented budget, sort of in an artificial way, just to meet this magic number, which is not magic. I would also like to point out that by, by using the 463 rate, we have come within $40,000 of a $10 million tax levy that was estimated. So looking at it that way, you can say, that's close enough. We came very close to what was actually an, an estimate. So I think we're meeting our financial plan in spirit. And in my opinion, the way a budget should be presented, should be looked at, is that we get that budget presented to us from our staff after much hard work, uh, communicating with the, uh, the department heads, finding out all the needs that they feel are necessary, and, you know, putting out a budget that meets our financial needs. We could do a bare-bones, one that, uh, meets the requirements, and one that might include a few nice-to-haves, so we could have two or three different scenarios that we would then be able to discuss, well, we think this item should be funded this year, or we think this item should not be funded this year. So the goal of setting the tax rate should not be, oh, but we have to meet this magic number that's on this chart. That is an estimate. It will never, it, it's a, it's a plan, it's a game plan, it's a tool. He used the, uh, you know, he, he used a federal rate of inflation, you know, he used a lot of estimates. That's not to criticize him, he had to use estimates, but the very fact that estimates are being used all the, all across the board on this financial plan, right there tells us, we don't have to meet a particular number, nor do we have to go in after the fact and change line items on an already presented budget just so we can meet this number that is not a valid number. So for that reason, I would like us to use the rate of .463280.
Thank you, Mary. Counsel, other questions? Other questions, comments from the counsel?
I have one question for Kim. Kim, I have one question. If we use a lower rate, are we gonna get everything that we need without changing line items and?
I will simply adjust the sales tax budgeted estimate up by the $39,000, $37,000. So it'll change one line item. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Beasley?
So I would like to say that, um, our 10-year plan was a tool that we paid, that we paid to have done for, for this purpose for today. So at that lower tax rate, regardless of how much money, how much more money a year, I mean, a month or a year that we're gonna take from the residents, if we don't have to, we shouldn't. We have enough money in the 46, 461579 rate to give, give the employees the 3% raise and fund our government and probably a few other things. So my position is that we stick with the 461579 rate, because if we don't need it, we shouldn't take it. If we don't, if we don't need the extra $40,000 this year, we may need it next year or the year before, so then we can go to the voters, but the voters approved that 10-year plan, so I said we should stick with it, so, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Charles. Anybody else wanna, any else? One thing I would say is, you know, my big concern on this budget was that we, we hit everything based on the, the COVID and the, all the changes, but also that we, uh, we still feel that our salaries are under, uh, we're, we're underpaying our, our folks at the cities. We will get them a small raise this year, which we haven't. We will get them a small raise this year, which we haven't, uh, which we, we've been needed to. We are losing folks based on salary, and I don't want that to happen. Uh, and we've got good people here. I'd like to reward them for their, their tenure. Uh, that was my big concern on this, and the four-six-one is able to do that, so I'm happy with it. And again, folks need to, to realize that this is all averages we're presenting. Uh, your tax, the taxes you pay is based on two things. It's the tax rate that we set, plus the value of your home set by TAD, Tarrant Appraisal District. So it's those two factors going together. So, we only control the tax rate, TAD assesses your home. So this is for the average home, the average, some people's taxes may go up, some may go down. It just depends on what your, your home is assessed, uh, in this, this year. So that's how it's sort of factored in to real. Another thing folks need to admit, to remember is, this is the Saginaw, City Saginaw Tax Rate. Uh, you also pay taxes to the school district, to the county, so this is not all. Uh, we're only a, a small part of it, and ours is pretty low, too. But enough said, so anything else from counsel? Uh, if, Cindy? Yes, ma'am.
And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, uh, what we're voting on tonight is merely the tax rate for the City of Saginaw. Gabe, do we still have that graphic on our website that shows the breakdown of the?
I, I think we do, um, so we don't know what other taxing entities' rates are until, you know, probably the next few weeks, but, uh, for the sake of a discussion, off the top of my head, the city portion of your tax bill was less than twenty percent. I think it was about eighteen percent, does that sound right? And we do keep a, a record of our, uh, utility rates, uh, tax rates and other things on our website, which is readily accessible.
But we also had.
Thankfully, and thankfully, compared to our, our neighbor, where our tax rate is, is far less, uh, in Fort Worth. So, folks across the street that are on, uh, Saginaw's side, their city portion of their taxes are, are sixty-seven percent less.
I just thought it was really interesting, uh, information that we had, that we could actually see the breakout of the, the taxing entities and the portions that we pay. The fact that it's not updated, I understand that, but it'd be good to keep that up on our, uh, website for the folks to be able to view at any time, so they can have an idea of how efficiently that, that the staff here runs the city.
Thank you, Cindy. Anything else, if any other comments from council or staff? If not, it's a public hearing, I will open it up for anybody who has any questions, so, yes, sir, please.
I'll make this real quick. My name is Cedric Eddington, I reside at two-four-one Rancho Drive, Saginaw, Texas. I just wanted to come and meet all you beautiful people who are for and against raising the taxes. I'll make this real quick. Uh, I, I now, I don't exactly know how you guys come up with the averages, uh, because I was looking at the table, and, um, it was one-seventy-eight, between one-seventy-eight and one-eight-eight thousand. And my home falls below that average. So, I'm at one-sixty-seven-five. So my question is, are these averages based on information from other portals like Zillow? Or, or is it, how is, how is it calculated?
I think, Kim, can you answer that?
The information is, is provided by Tarrant Appraisal District. So they take the total of all single-family homes and divide by the number of homes to come up with the average of what the average home is. So you're right, there's going to be some that are higher, there's some that are lower. That's just an, a number that we use as an average. But as the mayor said, your tax rate is dependent specifically on your value, which could be higher or lower than the average, or higher or lower in any given year.
Okay, the only, and the only reason why I mention that, too, is because with the co, current company that I pay, you know, my, my mortgage to, when I see what they have my house appraised as, and then I look at TAD, and I see what they have it appraised as, and then I just recently replied for my homestead, and they actually agreed at the rate that the mortgage company set it at. So, I'm just, this is my, first of all, this is my first time here, thank y'all for listening. And I'm just trying to get an understanding of how these averages are, you know, how we come about getting these averages. And I'm, 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 I'm against the tax increase, only for this year, uh, for two reasons. One of them's COVID. We don't know how everybody's income affected, is affected. That, and also for the very reason of the, what my house is appraised as. So it's like, I don't even fall in between the averages. So I'm trying to figure out, okay, hey, you know, maybe at a certain time, it may need to be reevaluated, the actual averages, and I understand it comes from TAD, but that's kind of, if you're just going by this model here, we don't actually know. So we're just, we're going on based on the average. And it may be, the, the rate may be higher for some people who are not appraised in between this table here. So, but that's all I have to say.
Mary, go ahead.
Thank you.
Kim will be a lot better at explaining this than I am, and if I explain it wrong, let me know. But what you need to do is the, the appraisal value from Tarrant Appraisal District for your home, you divide that by a hundred, and then you will multiply it by whatever tax rate we decide on tonight. And that will be your city tax bill. That will not include the school district, the college, the hospital, and the county. So what we're doing tonight is only the city portion of your larger tax bill.
Oh, no, I understand that the.
So you just divide it by a hundred and multiply it by this tax rate. That will give you the city portion, only the city portion.
Correct, and, and that's really all I'm addressing, because, uh, the other parts have already been established. The, the tax bill for the, uh, school districts. And I believe for, uh, Tarrant County Hospital, I think it's already, that's already been taken care of. I'm only dealing with the city of Saginaw, that's the only thing I'm addressing.
So did that, does that make it clear?
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other questions? Any other folks want to speak, now's your time. This is a public hearing, anyone, any and all can speak. Even Dana. Make sure you're paying attention. Any other questions? Anything else on item, sorry, on item ten? Questions, concerns, comments, anything else? If not, then at six-thirty-seven, I'll take us out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion for, uh, item number ten.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion.
Oh, wait.
Oh, wait, I have to read it just like this.
You do.
Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four-six-one-five-seven-nine, which is effectively a point seventy-nine percent increase in the tax rate.
I'll second.
I'll say, okay, thank you. Any questions on this? So this is for the point four-six-one rate, point four-six-one-five-seven-nine.
Yes, the lower rate.
That's the mayor pro temp's, um, motion was for. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and keep them up. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you, all right. Motion passed, and we needed five votes, correct?
Yes, sir, that, that finishes it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. That's item number ten. Item number eleven, at six-thirty-eight, we are in a public hearing. Presentation of the revised budget for fiscal year twenty-nineteen dash twenty-twenty, the last year's budget. Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, it's in our charter, and it's, and it's the state law that we have to amend the budget in the same manner in which we adopt the budget, and therefore, we have our public hearing. Um, again, I'm not going to go through a lot of details. In your packet, you had a memo and line items detailing the changes. I'll say, um, a lot of the highlights and the modifications are due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. It affected both our revenues and our expenditures. We were fortunate in that, um, our revenues did not suffer as much as some cities, and that we were able to, um, we were proactive and able to cut expenditures where we could in order to keep a balanced budget. In addition to that, we received the one-point-two-million in CARES Act funding through Tarrant County, um, which is going to help the general fund as well. So, those are the comments I have prepared for it. I'm happy to answer any questions by fund, or any line items, if you have any.
Counsel, questions for Kim on the revised budget? So this is last year's, or the current fiscal year's budget that we are revising. Any questions? Comments, concerns? Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience wants to ask questions about the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget, this, now's the time. And just to explain, we have to wrap up the twenty-nineteen, the previous year's budget before we start the, the next year's budget, to make sure everything matches. All the numbers have to match, it's a lot of accounting that Kim's very good at. Um, and that's why we have to revise at this time. It's, it's odd, we just approved next year's budget, we're also revising last year's budget to make sure everything matches. So, any questions? Anybody want to, any comments, concerns? Oh, yes, Cindy.
I have one question. Uh, we have a line item here toward the bottom of the list that says COVID-nineteen expenses for fifteen thousand dollars. What exactly were those items?
We have, we have them throughout the departments, which, which, uh, you said the bottom of the page. So, that was the bottom of the first page, so fifteen.
Page three.
The fifteen thousand one is in admin, so we had a couple of expenses related to that in general admin. For one, we had, it's these Plexiglas dividers. Um, all of the, um, hand sanitizer, sanitizing supplies. We have five thousand dollars that we're going to have to pay for a single audit due to the, um, one-point-two-million that we're receiving. That's actual federal money that's going through the county, so it's, it's those types of expenditures. Um, but general admin is not the only one. The other, other departments, you'll see COVID-nineteen expenditures. Um, I'm specifically accounting for those in a separate line item because the auditors will come look specifically at those items to make sure that they qualify.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Was the reimbursement for, from, um, MedStar in, in here?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Was the reimbursement from MedStar? Because MedStar was supposed to get a, a portion of that?
Yes, I want to say that was about forty-five hundred dollars, and that's actually in the fire department's budget.
Excellent, thank you, Kim. Any other questions? And not just for counsel, anybody in the audience, it's a public hearing, all are welcome to speak at this point. If not, at six-forty-two, close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consideration, or on number twelve, reaction for twenty-twenty nineteen to twenty-twenty, the revised budget.
Okay, thank you, Valerie.
I'm confused.
Cindy, second? All those in favor, raise your right hand? Those opposed? All right. Thank you, folks, that's item eleven, excuse me. Item twelve, consideration action regarding resolution twenty-twenty dash twenty-two, adoption of the revised budget for fiscal year twenty-nineteen dash twenty. And that, Kim Quinn.
Mayor, I, I apologize, the, the last item was just a public hearing, so.
I was confused.
But, so, but it's okay, I mean, we made a motion to approve the revised budget, so it's, it's up to you if you want a presentation, but I think it's been taken care of.
Oops, sorry.
That's all right, I'm confused, too.
No, I'm, my bad. So, any other questions on this? We just voted on, any questions on this? Anybody want to see the, the resolution, which is just a resolution, very simple? If not, then I guess we're good. Thank you, Bren. It's a tough job keeping me out of jail, I know, sorry. All right, so that's twelve, so I think we're done, thank you, Valerie. Moving forward, item number thirteen, consideration action regarding ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty, water and wastewater service rates. For that, Kim Quinn.
This is the last item that's all related to the budget. Um, the budget that you just approved included, um, changes to the water and sewer rates. The net effect will be for an average home using eight thousand gallons of water a month will be a savings of about sixty-four cents a month. So this is just to formally, the ordinance to formally approve the change in the water and wastewater rates.
And just to reiterate, we do buy, we purchase our water from Fort Worth, the City of Fort Worth, and we sell our wastewater back to the City of Fort Worth. So they do get us coming and going. Uh, there is a committee, though, that, uh, of cities that deal with Fort Worth that we are on. I think Dolph is on that committee, uh, about the rates and how everything works out. So this is, uh, we look at what Fort Worth proposes, and we see how much we want to pass on to the citizens, how much we want to absorb. Uh, so it really just depends, we try to pass on as little as we can, but keep the rates pretty steady. So that's, that's sort of how, how it all works. We do not have our own wastewater treatment, thankfully. So any questions on, uh, waste and wastewater rates? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the action regarding ordinance number twenty-twenty dash twenty, water and wastewater sewer rates.
Charlie, second? All those in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Moving forward, item number fourteen, so at six-forty-five, recess into workshop. Item fifteen, discussion regarding roundabouts and Noel's Drive intersection. For that, we have a VIP here with us from Kim Lee Horn. I'm, I'm keeping the, the bar pretty low for you there. Welcome, Dana.
Thank you. Did y'all have handouts? Did you already give them handouts for the presentation?
Yes, yes, we have.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council. Excited to be here tonight to talk about roundabouts, and I know it's been a long-awaited, uh, topic. Before I get into the presentation, I just want to let you know a little bit. I have about, we have about thirty minutes of actual prepared presentation, but we also want to have, hear your voices, and let you guys voice your concerns and questions, and we can have a discussion, so.
You're going to move fast, though, right?
We have thirty minutes of actual, like, we'll see. Well, I, I'm from Michigan, remember, I talk fast.
I know you talk fast, that's why I'm hoping it'll be faster.
It may go faster, and, um, so.
Before we go, I've got a, I've got a sheet here, roundabout workshop. Any of the audience want to see this? Because I've, I've read it, I've seen it.
I've got one.
Anybody like to, want to look at?
If they'd like to look at it.
Go for it. All yours, anybody? I don't want it back.
I'll remove my mask.
No, ma'am, all yours. Please.
Do I have to aim it to you, the mask? Okay, cool. Is the mic on? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, with the mask off, I can hear you.
Yes, I forgot to take the mask off, I'm so used to it now. Okay, we're getting started. In front of you is what we're going to talk about tonight. First, I'm going to introduce my team that's with me, then I'll go into some project background. It's been, can you believe it, over a year since we actually came and presented on Noel's Drive back in July last year, so I'll give you a little bit more background just to get everybody up to speed of where we're at. And then talk about the traffic analysis and recommendations that we're, that we have. Get your feedback, let you, everyone speak their voice of what their concerns or questions about roundabouts. We've already heard some of it from the past discussions we've had about the pub, uh, the pedestrian safety, so we have some, um, data and presentation in there to be able to address some of those concerns. And then we can, I think, open it up to public comment after that, if there's people in the audience, is that what we're doing?
Yep.
And then, um, get some direction on next steps. So moving on, first, for those listening from home and in the audience that don't know me, I'm Dana Schumard, I'm with Kim Lee Horn, I've been working, doing roadway design for eighteen years, been working in Saginaw for fifteen, so, um, I know everyone well pretty here. I've pretty much designed most of the streets. And Trenton Tidwell's behind the computer there, he's with me, he works, he's a roadway engineer working with me. But we brought in some experts, um, there's one in, sitting with me here, Jay Von Ozon, and we have actually one on the computer, sitting in Atlanta, so I'll kind of do a high-level introduction of them from the roundabout experts we have on our, in our company. So Jay's been working, um, in the industry for seventeen years, mainly focused on roadway intersection improvements. He's actually designed over two-hundred-and-fifty roundabouts between design, analyze, and did peer reviews. He's what we call our local roundabout expert, he's done majority of his designs in Texas. He's actually our, the local roundabout expert on call for several cities like Fort Worth, Denton, Keller, they're all listed up there, so Jay's got quite a bit of experience. And any questions you have, probably related to roundabouts in the metroplex, he could probably answer. And then with us, um, online is Mark Lenters. He's been in the, um, industry for over thirty years, in the safety industry. He's been doing roundabouts for the last probably ten to fifteen years. He's done over fifteen-hundred roundabouts nationwide. He's actually helped a lot of agencies develop roundabout programs. So DOTs, counties, cities do roundup, roundabout programs, with Fort Worth being one of them. And, um, so we, we call him our national expert, since he's done so many, and he's worked in forty-four of the fifty states doing roundabout work. So, that's who's with me tonight. So, just getting you up to speed on the project, so Noel's Drive, we did the conceptual design in corridor evaluation and intersection evaluations back last spring, so we could do a high-level cost to be able to figure out how much Noel's would cost, so the bond committee could help figure out what, what we wanted to do for Noel's Drive. So it's broken up into three different phases. It'd be, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but there's three different colors. Phase one is the north part from Edwards Drive down to north end of the park, that's where all the flooding is happening. So to improve that, that's phase one. We're at sixty percent, completed sixty percent design, we're working towards the ninety. We're at 60%, completed 60% design, we're working towards the 90% design on that. And then the next two phases, phase two and phase three are purple and blue, and we're working towards 60%, so that's why we wanted to get in front of y'all sooner than later, because we wanted to get some direction on the intersection improvements, or recommendations, because it does make an impact to the design. So previously, we gave you our recommendations of doing roundabouts at W.J. Bowes and at the McElroy intersection, and that still stands, I'm going to give a little bit more detail on that in a minute here, so I'll move into that. So just wanted to reiterate that we recommended an intersection, or a roundabout at W.J. Bowes and McElroy, or Knolls, a single lane back last year, and I believe that was, there was no major concerns with that, but again, we'll hear it from y'all. Cindy's saying, no, that's not true. But that intersection's an always stop, it experiences significant delay today, so we analyzed both the traffic signal and a roundabout, and a roundabout really made the most sense at this location. You cut your delay by significantly by doing a roundabout versus a signal, it's 36 seconds of average day delay versus 11 seconds, so it's like two and a half times, the amount of time if you're at a signal than a roundabout on that intersection. So moving on to the McElroy intersection, the existing intersection is signalized today, I think if you all recall, it used to be an always stop, and then we put up a traffic signal just to help with the interim condition. However, it's lacking turn lanes on Knolls, so right now, that what's out there is an interim condition or a temporary fix for the traffic backups out there, or traffic out there. And the ultimate configuration would be either a roundabout or a signal and expanding the lanes. So we've analyzed what the existing condition with the configuration with the signal, we analyzed intersection widening with the signal, and roundabout options. So overall, I'm going to show a couple slides in a second, overall, the roundabouts have less delay than a signal, and signals actually introduce quite a bit of delay during non-peak times, during off-peak times, that you have to stop for a signal that you wouldn't have to for a roundabout. So that was overall analysis, we do recommend a roundabout still from a traffic aspect, we're also from a pedestrian safety aspect, Jay's going to touch on a little bit more here in a little bit, but from a pure traffic standpoint, we recommend the roundabout. I do want to note that it's a little bit different than we presented last time, I think we had showed a single lane roundabout initially with the potential to go to a dual lane on the east-west connect road, which is McElroy. We've since refined our analysis, and we believe a single lane will suffice for quite a few years with the need for maybe an eastbound right turn lane, bypass lane in the future if it's warranted. And I have a graphic, I see the mayor's thing, so I have a graphic I can show in a second here. So this is the table I was talking about, shows the different, the average delay, this is not like, don't quote us on these numbers, but this is just showing the differences between a signal and a roundabout. The blue is the existing configuration with existing counts, the existing traffic out there, and the red is what the, how the roundabout would function. So as you can see, this is just for the average delay at the intersection, so you're waiting at a signal for twice as long as you are a roundabout during the peak times, and you're about 10 seconds less during the other times of the day during the existing configuration. And the next one's showing the ultimate configuration in the ultimate build-out year, which is about 20 years from now. The average delays, you can see, the blue is the ultimate signal, the temporary signal, and the green is the ultimate signal configuration, and then the red is the roundabout. So as you can see during the peak hours, yes, sir? What part? The colors?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
What each part of that is?
Yeah, so the blue is the existing configuration with the existing signal out there. So the existing lane configuration, the existing traffic signal that exists today at the intersection of Knolls and McElroy.
Temporary.
Yeah, I call the temporary signal, yes, so it's the temporary one. The green is putting a traffic signal in, a new traffic signal with widening the lane, so an ultimate traffic signal. And then the red is the single lane roundabout. Do we want to wait for public questions?
Just for clarification, can you say that you're talking about widening? Does that include the left turn lane in all directions, in all order?
Yeah, I'll show, I'll show the graphic in a second. So yeah, so I'll show it in a second, so it's hard to explain this, I guess, without that picture, but in general, the point of this slide is just to show that it's half the delay for a roundabout versus a signal at the peak hours, and then, as you can see, you have unnecessary delay during the, all the day at a traffic signal than you would at a roundabout. So that's the point of this graphic. So here is the graphics that we're talking about, so this is what we're proposing to build now, would be a single lane roundabout, and some enhanced crosswalks, and Jay's going to talk about that in a little bit here, so I don't want to steal his thunder. And then this would be what the configuration would look like if it was a traffic signal and widening. So you can see east-west on McElroy, it's widening to have a left turn lane and a right turn lane in each direction, and a through lane. And then north-south, there would be a left turn pocket on Knolls. Okay, so that's a quick recap of the traffic analysis, so now I think we want to listen from y'all, any concerns you have and anything we haven't heard, so make sure that we can address your questions. I'm going to turn it over to Jay at this point, but do you want to start maybe with Charles and go around the room, or how do you want to do it, Gabe, do you think?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything, Charles?
No.
Okay, then maybe Valerie next?
The biggest concerns that I've heard, because we're putting a senior center on that side of the road, and people cross there, is there some way that we can get a protected crossing so that on McElroy and Knolls, that way, that they can get over there safely? We have seniors on one side, and then we have quite a few patrons that go, citizens that go crossover right there at the light, going straight down Knolls across McElroy.
All right, I guess I can give an introduction now, if you don't mind, Mayor?
No.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead. Mayor Council, it's very nice to see you tonight, and staff as well. As Dana mentioned, I do work here locally, I'm out of our Dallas office in Dallas, Texas, here. And again, tonight, really, my initial placement here in this meeting is more for general roundabout questions and answers, but we had developed more detailed information based on some of the citizen comments that have been received here in the city over last weekend, this past weekend, and again, tonight is, as you have questions, so I will be able to address your question a little bit later in the presentation, if that's all right. Thank you.
I have a ton of questions, but I'll let you do your presentation first.
Thank you. Okay, great, well, thank you very much. Again, I appreciate being here tonight. A lot of these types of meetings that I go to, different council settings, different public hearings, public meetings throughout Texas and other states, is every once in a while, you get that new community that's new to roundabouts, or doesn't have a roundabout yet, and I know a lot of people have driven the roundabouts probably in Fort Worth and other local cities. So it may not be new essentially to drivers, but to your community it is. And I know from past experience, you know, last 10 years especially, being focused on roundabouts, is that it's, there's somewhat of a fear of change and a fear of unknown in these types of communities, when something new comes in that's not there before. And so I do want to address that right off the bat, is in reading through the comments that were on Facebook and some of the social media comments, is, that's not uncommon, we see that in communities across the US that are new to roundabouts. And so really, again, that's the reason why we're here. I really appreciate your IT staff helping us get Mark here virtually, and I don't know if we've tested that yet, but Trenton will be able to test it, it sounds like it's good. So if there's any questions I can't field, I will defer to Mark, who has been doing this type of safety research and projects for the last 30 years of his career. Essentially, the good news here in Saginaw that I see is everybody's concerned about safety, which, you know, I think is adamant, online and the social media, we're concerned not only with vehicle safety, but with pedestrians and cyclists, and children, elderly, and especially the disabled community. That's very important, and I think we all share that goal. That's a part of the reason why I kind of transferred my career a couple years ago, five years ago, is before I did roadway design, that's all I did. All of a sudden, I had a passion for safety, and that's one of the reasons why it drove me into this roundabout world that I live in now. Some of the things that we do run into, of course, is a little bit of misinformation in communities, so we try to go, and typically, we try to do public outreach type materials, whether it's website content, PSAs, pliers, brochures, so we have a lot of that content too, and we'll share a little bit of that here in the presentation as well. And tonight, really, again, I mentioned, we're here to talk about roundabouts, but I'd also like to unpack some of the comments that have been made maybe over the weekend, and just address those and try to inform a little bit. This is a study that was done by the International Institute of Highway Safety, I provided a link there in case you're interested in reading it, it's actually four different studies that are kind of rolled into one, but this is a very common type of theme, where before there's a roundabout in the community, you see about 30% of the population support it, and then a year later, all of a sudden, there's this transfer of ideas and information and drivers, and all of a sudden, it's, you know, somewhere around the 70% level as far as that support. I've seen other studies in other states that go up as high as 80 to 84% for support of the roundabout a year or two later after it's built. And so it's a very common theme, you kind of start with a little bit of less traction, and over time, as drivers drive the intersection, you realize it's not as bad as I thought in my mind that it would be. Another study that was done in Washita County, Michigan, near Ann Arbor, a few years ago, was pretty much the same results, about 30% before, and that was a little bit higher. Mark McCulloch with Washita County administered that survey pretty much on his own, it was a grassroots effort that he made, it was an online survey that he created both before and after a project, roundabout project. So if you're interested in looking that up as well, I can provide that content online. The key thing when we talk about facts and basically research and evidence is, the things that I like to fall back on are these agencies that are listed here. So you have the TRB, which is the Transportation Research Board, US DOT, Federal Highway Administration. The Federal Highway Administration has a specific Office of Safety that focuses on how do we improve safety across the country? And so one of those folks, Hillary Isabrenz, that works in Loveland, Colorado for the FHWA, has been an advocate of roundabouts for the last five, 10 years. She's actually made trips here to Texas over the last, again, five to 10 years, to speak to different communities, to put on trainings for engineers, and she's another contact, you know, in case you'd like to call her up or email her, I can provide that information as well. And then, of course, NCHRP, I don't know if we've sent you enough NCHRP studies yet, but essentially, that's typically a joint effort between Federal Highway Administration and the US DOT, where they provide funding for researchers to go out and try to look at issues that are out there in the US on our streets, at our intersections, and then the researchers gather the data, analyze it, and then provide recommendations on how to basically provide solutions to cities, counties, and state highway departments. And then last, of course, research agencies like TTI, they do a lot of research on how to things, make things safer on our roadways. Really, tonight, I'm going to focus on some facts, I won't get into hopefully many opinions, I know there's a lot of opinions out there, I try to stay away from those, but really, anything that can be proven to exist or is true is what I really want to focus on. There's a saying, the absence of evidence is the evidence of absence, and I'll kind of reiterate that a couple times as we're talking on a few of these slides, because I think it's important, you know, when we can't find something in our country or at our intersections, it's really hard to prove that it exists, but also, we don't know that it does not exist either. So that's a kind of a common theme as well. Starting off, and I'm not going to go through these individually, a couple of the ones I did want to mention, though, of course, the first one being that roundabouts are not safe for pedestrians, kids, and seniors, that's one of the myths, the common myths that we hear about in our industry. It's something we call, we actually had a myth busting session last month as part of the International Transportation Engineers Association, and did a presentation on that. One of the comments I did see, it actually quoted Lee Rodergerz and provided some information, some quotes from him from 2010. Coincidentally, I was copied on some emails with Lee over the weekend, we were talking about how AAA used to have a slogan on every single stop sign on the back of the sign that said courtesy is safety. And somehow, you know, over the weekend, when I noticed Lee's name, I also saw the posting on Facebook here in Saginaw, so I thought it'd be interesting to call Lee yesterday and just talk to him about this project and get his thoughts. Lee's been a researcher for many years here in the US, and has done a lot of the, you know, national research here on intersection safety as well as roadway safety. After describing the context of the project here in Saginaw, the, you know, posted speeds of 30 to 35 miles per hour, the adjacent park, the proposed development that has the assisted living and the community that's going in on the northeast corner, as well as it being a first roundabout in a community, I asked Lee what his opinion would be, you know, whether traffic signal or roundabout, single lane roundabout, and what his thoughts were. He essentially told me that his belief is that single lane roundabouts are the safest form of intersection, not just for vehicles, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists. And again, this is coming from a researcher that's been looking at these types of intersections throughout the country for decades. The main reason behind that is, right now, we have over 7,000 roundabouts in the US on the ground, some were built 25 years ago, some were just opened to traffic two weeks ago. The thing that he reemphasized in me was that we have yet to find a roundabout that has a recurring danger or recurring issue with pedestrian safety and bicycle safety here in the US. When you think about why crashes occur, you know, it's really mistakes that are made, you know, it's the distracted driving, it's somebody speeding, it's somebody driving under the influence, maybe a number of different things, but typically, you know, these are mistakes that are made by drivers, and maybe even pedestrians or bicyclists making a mistake as well. So as I go through a few slides, I want to also reiterate just that fact of what happens when a mistake is made at one of these intersections, what's the significance of that crash that may occur? Again, I'm not going to go through all these, one thing that did touch my interest, though, is that regarding the firehouse, the fire station that may be built nearby, I actually just did a research project in July of this year, asking first responders around the country what their experiences are, what their feelings are about roundabouts in their communities. And so we have that in a separate document that I can share, we just actually finalized it today, and are having a webinar next week, if Chief Spears and Chief Howell, if you want to invite your staff to that webinar, I can send you an invite. We'll basically be discussing the reaction, though, from first responders with roundabouts. Overall, two-thirds of the respondents said that they have seen a positive increase in response time and safety at the roundabouts that have been put in their communities when they replace a stop sign or a traffic signal. So just a little bit of a teaser, I guess, for the results that we'll be sharing next First off, I want to apologize if this graphic looks a little confusing, it's somewhat meant to do that, though, it's, this is the look at intersections side by side, so this is the ultimate traffic signal on the left, and then this would be the proposed roundabout on the right. Going back to speed considerations, so one of the common things that we look at at any intersection, whether it's a traffic signal or roundabout, diverging diamond interchange, whatever it may be, is what type of speeds are going to be present at that location? There's a transfer of energy whenever a vehicle hits a vehicle, or a vehicle hits a bike or a pedestrian. Obviously, with bikes and pedestrians, there's not as much reactive energy when that vehicle collides. So the main thing that we think about is, under these types of conditions, you know, within those driving speeds, how many conflicts are there within the intersection, and what speeds are those conflicts going to be at? So on the left there, you can see, this would be a scenario where McElroy is going within a green phase, so you have through movements, eastbound, westbound, through the intersection, and the red lines indicate the directions that vehicles would be allowed to move during that one single phase of the traffic signal. And this is very important, because, you know, it's not just one cross, one crosswalk that you need to think about as a pedestrian as you're moving through the roundabout within a given phase, you know, it's actually all four of those crosswalks that need to be considered for safety type of consideration. On the right side, with a roundabout, the speeds are going to be generally 15 miles per hour circulating, which is going to be a lower speed. The crossing distances on the left we're dealing with, I believe it's 75 feet north-south across McElroy for a pedestrian. With a roundabout, we're dealing with 17 feet of crossing distance to get to that center pedestrian refuge area, and then to cross the other side. With a roundabout, we're only looking at one direction of traffic, you know, instead of kind of multiple angles, and I'll have a slide with some video to kind of show the difference in the complexity of crossing each of these types of intersections. Really, this chart is more or less just to show the common speeds through intersections again, so starting from the top is the 20 mile per hour speeds through an intersection. These percentages deal with the chance of a pedestrian being killed if hit by a traffic vehicle. This was a study that was conducted in 1999, it was actually, I believe, first produced in 1994, and then republished in 1999. But you can see there, so the roundabout is more indicative of the 20 mile per hour speeds, possibly even less, so a pedestrian would have about a 5% chance of surviving if hit by a vehicle in that intersection. But as you go down that list, 30 miles per hour, 40 miles per hour, 50 miles per hour, all of a sudden, that percentage increases just due to the speed of the vehicle and the interaction with the pedestrian. So again, this is one of the reasons why FHWA promotes the use of roundabouts, not just for vehicles, but also for pedestrians, because of their life-saving tendencies when a crash occurs. And again, it's, you can't really, as an engineer, predict where crashes are going to happen, they're really anywhere, we can't pinpoint because of a, typically because of a intersection type, whether there's going to be a fatality or a serious injury there. Again, it's more of a mistake that was made by a driver, a pedestrian, or maybe a bicyclist, and that's a result of the crash. and that's a result of the crash.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Could you go back up to that slide?
Sure. Let me...
Are you, no, yeah, that one. Are you saying at twenty miles an hour, there's only a five percent death rate if a pedestrian gets hit by a car?
Based on this study that was done in nineteen ninety-nine, yes.
Okay. Who did the test?
The source is right there at the bottom of the screen. So this was done by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. So yeah, that's, you know, as far as the studies show...
Let me ask you this, do you believe that?
I actually do. I was actually involved in a vehicle crash when I was sixteen.
I'm not talking a crash. I'm talking in a roundabout and a chance of pedestrian death when hit by a motor vehicle at twenty miles an hour. And you're going to believe that?
Well, I would say at any intersection, there's the five percent chance of a death occurring, just based on this data. Again, whether it's...
That's not what that's saying.
Well, this is, whether it's a roundabout or a traffic signal, at that speed, what the study shows is there's a five percent chance of a death occurring if hit by the vehicle. And then, as you can see, as the speeds increase, the percentage goes up. This is a, this will be an example of both types of crossing situations. So on the top left, you'll actually see a video play on your screens of crossing a signalized intersection. And as this plays through, I'll try to narrate. On the bottom-left side of the screen will be a roundabout crossing scenario. I realize we couldn't get everybody out of here to go walk intersections during this meeting, so this was essentially what I could come up with. Strapped a GoPro to my head, went out to a few intersections that are local, and created this video. Again, off to the right, you can see some of those common parameters as well for the crossing. So let me see if this plays. Okay. So as of right now, I'm waiting to cross the signalized intersection. I'm looking around for any type of obstacles, issues that may be present at the intersection. See, looking back to my left behind me to make sure there's no right-turning vehicles. Across the way, again, about a hundred and twelve feet across the street is that signal, that walk signal indication. So I'm checking that. It still says, "Don't walk." So at that time, I'm remaining there at the ramp itself, waiting for those drivers to turn left on that opposing movement across my crosswalk. You can't see it really in the video, but then all of a sudden, that walk indication came up. So I checked left behind me, make sure there's no right-turning vehicles that are going to collide with me as I'm starting in the crosswalk area. Checking to the left to make sure those opposing vehicles don't run into me as I'm crossing the crosswalk. Checking to my right, make sure there's no red light runners, nobody sneaking up on me. And then again, once I get to the end of that street, that's a dedicated right-turn lane here coming up, so I'm going to make sure there's nobody in that right-turn lane coming up. Going to do what they call, I guess, a running on red, if that's the right term to use. And then finally, get across the crosswalk. So in comparison, and I just want to go through this roundabout example, so this is a dual-lane roundabout, not a singling roundabout, it's a little bit more complex. So right now, I'm waiting on the ramp, waiting for a safe gap to cross. The motorists in the vehicle actually waves to me, so I wave back, go ahead and cross the crosswalk. Takes about eight seconds to get across that crossing there with a twenty-four feet distance. And now I'm in that pedestrian area that protects the pedestrians from vehicles inside the refuge. So again, I'm looking off to my right, looking to see those oncoming vehicles. Also note that if there's crossing, there's only signage, so that's the only thing present for motorists to know that there's a crosswalk there, is a signage and the pavement marking on the street. So as that last vehicle goes through and I have a gap, I move into the crosswalk, still checking to my right, make sure there's no vehicles that are coming, and then get across the crosswalk in eight seconds. So hopefully, this shows a little bit. I don't know if you wanted me to replay it or not, but to me, the hundreds of roundabouts I've crossed, the thousands of signals I've crossed, I still feel more comfortable crossing a roundabout. I would still have my children cross it a roundabout than any traffic signal. That's my personal experience. I know other, I said I wouldn't share opinions, so I apologize for that, but that's just my opinion. This is just another video showing...
Excuse me, sorry. What sort of businesses or residences were on the four corners, so to speak, on those videos?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What, are there any businesses or neighborhoods or residences or on those four corners?
Up at the top-left of the screen where the traffic signal was, it's a heavy residential area. This is Ohio Drive in the city of Frisco. And off to the left side, the northwest corner of the intersection, I believe, is actually a commercial property. And then the lower-left is also Ohio Drive, basically just the next major intersection to the south. There's a lot of heavy commercial on that intersection. I know there's a supermarket on the northwest corner. There's development going in on the north, or sorry, southwest corner, and then undeveloped right now on the northeast, southeast. Traffic volumes are very similar at both those intersections, so that's one of the reasons why I also chose those two sites, just to kind of have a comparison of traffic as well. But it is the same north-south corridor. They're both on Ohio Drive.
And they're both primarily residential neighborhoods?
Yeah, I would say to the north, where the traffic signal is, is much more residential than to the south, where the roundabout is. There's a little bit of residential off to the east, the northeast of the roundabout, but to the west, it starts to get heavy commercial because you're starting to get over towards Preston Road and some highly commercial areas.
So the roundabout is not fully residential or city park?
No, I wouldn't call it...
Take our example.
No, I wouldn't call it a city park, but it's, you know, it's a similar, I guess, site along Ohio Drive that was just picked for this video.
Hey, the point of the video was to show the, but how many lanes you have to look at. What was the comparison?
Yeah, crossing complexity is one of the things we look at with pedestrian safety as well, is, you know, how often do we have to turn our head? What is that cone of vision where we have to be looking at? And again, really, the point is with the roundabouts, we're focusing in one direction. Our cone of vision is very narrow compared to the signal where I'm looking behind me to my left, I'm looking to the right ninety degrees, you know, trying to maneuver all those different conflicts that may be in the intersection. And again, it's, if everybody follows the control at a traffic signal, they do work great. They're very safe. You know, if everybody follows stopping at a red light, not turning, you know, not running a red light or turning red across a conflicting movement, not speeding through a roundabout or trying to beat the amber when that amber light comes up before the red light. There's a lot of key things that happen at traffic signals that we just assume people are going to obey the rules of the intersection. So this is just another example. So this is a singling roundabout where there's a bicyclist approaching the intersection there. You can see them off to the top of the screen. She's going to navigate around. She has actually a child, so this is a tandem bicycle with a trailer. I've never tried that. It seems really complicated, but she pulls it off pretty well. As you can see, there's a large truck circulating the singling roundabout at this point, his speed likely down around the five, ten mile per hour range, probably ten miles per hour there at the exit. You can see the crossing, the crosswalk area there. So she's actually done this correctly. She's gotten the child off the bicycle and herself off of the bicycle, and this is part of public outreach, public education, to make sure that parents are aware of the rules of crossing crosswalks as well when you're a bicyclist. As you can see there, they're looking to their left. There's a vehicle that waits for them that yields inside the roundabout, a good thirty to forty feet away from the crossing itself. And then she crosses across a crosswalk safely. The one thing is, we typically don't design pedestrian refuge for that long of designed vehicle, for a tandem bike with a trailer. So maybe one thing for us to consider in areas like this as well. But as you can see there, traffic's back to normal pretty quickly. That crossing time is very small, so there's not a lot of delay for vehicles that are waiting for the pedestrians to cross because, again, that crossing distance is so short.
And Jay, Mark pointed out via chat that that one is next to a park. That's where the lady was coming from?
There we go. So to get into this specific Saginaw roundabout here at Knowles and McElroy, this is typical of what we would do at any standard singling roundabout, and this is a signage template taken out at TMUTCD. This is a Texas Manual and Unit Form Traffic Control Devices. So as a singling roundabout would be considered, the signs in advance that warn of a roundabout ahead are optional, you know, based on our regulations here in Texas. The pedestrian crossing, the warning signs there in yellow with the downward pointing arrow are also optional at any crossing for a singling roundabout. The yield signs at the entry, you can see on the perimeter side, on the right side of the roundabout, are a required sign based on UTCD. On the left side in the splitter island is optional. And then again, there in the central island, the middle of the roundabout, we have those Chevron signs, you know, kind of those black and white signs there to try to reinforce that counterclockwise movement. One thing that we have considered in other communities is a one-way sign can replace that sign. Some cities tend to think that the Chevron's a little confusing, you know, they're kind of new to the US. I've been told they're very European-looking, so every once in a while, we'll adopt and put the one-way sign instead of the Chevron in there in the middle. Yeah, I think I did something to the remote. Now, to get into some advanced treatments, what have also been established and approved for use on our roadways, this is called the RFB. It stands for Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon. So this is a device that can be installed really at any intersection, whether it's signalized or a roundabout. And that's placed right directly below that pedestrian warning sign. And it's pedestrian-actuated, where a pedestrian walks up, pushes a button on a bollard or on the sign itself, and then that flashing strobe goes back and forth underneath the sign. So whether it's during the day or at night, that's going to provide some enhanced visibility for approaching motorists saying, "Hey, there's a pedestrian here. You need to slow down, yield, you know, and stop because there is somebody present in this crosswalk area." What's important to note is that we can wire these signs so that they both indicate whether you're approaching the roundabout or coming to the exit of the roundabout, you know, just to make sure that if, you know, say, we're on the approach to the roundabout and there's a pedestrian crossing, eventually, that pedestrian's also going to have to cross the exit side of the roundabout. So we also have that sign blinking on the opposite side just to make sure vehicles circulating in the roundabout pause and wait for the pedestrian as well. Another enhanced feature that has become somewhat popular after the release of NCHRP Report 834, which is based on pedestrian crossing solutions, is the raised crosswalk. I don't hear too many groans from the fire chief or police chief yet, but these aren't your traditional speed humps or speed bumps. These have actually been re-engineered to be much more gradual for large truck use. The front side has about a six to seven percent incline, and then the crosswalk itself obviously would be less than two percent for ADA. And then the backside of the raised crosswalk, as the vehicle departs, is a gradual two percent, right in that range, depending on the roadway grades, because that's always going to change how we grade out the raised crosswalks. This example is 51st Street in Austin, Texas. So this is something, a project that Tech dot actually put in a couple years ago. It won the Tech Site Roundabout of the Year Award based on its improvements to operations and safety based on its first years of operation. The main thing that I did want to point out with this as well is, again, we have an enhanced pedestrian element to this, which is the beacon that's located below that pedestrian warning sign. So again, another ability for a pedestrian to walk up, push a button, and that beacon will flash, you know, letting motorists know, "Hey, there's a pedestrian here at the crosswalk. Slow down, yield, stop," while that pedestrian's in the crosswalk area. And again, that's going to occur on both the near side of the crosswalk as well as on that far side of the crosswalk on the entry into the roundabout. Really, the reason I wanted to bring this up tonight is that, again, talking to Lee on Monday, we specifically talked, again, pedestrian safety. The interesting thing with Lee, all that we talked about Monday, was that I knew he had done this NCHRP Report 888. It's a new report that came out a few years ago. It actually predicts the number of crashes that will occur at a roundabout based on ADT and the number of lanes of the roundabouts, whether it's a singling roundabout or a multilane roundabout. If you know the anticipated traffic, you can come up with a prediction of how many fatal injury and property damage-only collisions will occur at that roundabout. We have similar models for traffic signals as well that have been here in our country for decades. They're part of the Highway Safety Manual. One of the interesting things with NCHRP Report 888, and Lee was, I believe, the principal investigator for that research project. Mark can correct me if he had a different role. But he mentioned that the initial intent of that research was not just to produce crash models for vehicles, but also to produce crash models for pedestrians. He thought, you know, they thought that was really important at the time because we have seven thousand roundabouts in the US. Over four thousand of those are singling roundabouts. You know, by now, we should be able to predict a crash at a roundabout, you know, per year based on this empirical data that we have throughout the country. One of the things they ran into in their data collection process was, they weren't finding any pedestrian injuries, fatalities. Essentially, what he told me is, they couldn't find enough data to build a model, a safety model, for pedestrian crashes at roundabouts. So they ended up scrapping that model and only the vehicle crash prediction model. So again, is the absence of evidence, evidence of absence? If something doesn't exist, you know, how can we really predict it or know it to be true? That's the thing that, again, I want to reiterate is, you know, the wording of roundabouts being dangerous intrigues me. You know, as soon as I hear that, I get online and I see if there's a new roundabout that's had a crash, whether it's a pedestrian, a vehicle, whatever it may be. From what I've heard in the industry, because we don't have enough documented evidence, I can count on my, on both hands, how many pedestrian fatalities have occurred over the last twenty-five years at roundabouts in the US. I would need all your hands and fingers and toes to count, you know, same, as far as traffic signals, for that statistic. So again, it's, the empirical data, what it's showing us is that there is no safety issue with roundabouts. We have roundabouts next to hospitals, roundabouts next to assisted living centers, roundabouts on college campuses, next to parks throughout the country. And I have a link to a database. If you search for Kittleson Roundabout Database online, it'll actually bring you to the national database of roundabouts that we have here in our country. And you can search that, do advanced searches for pedestrians, parks, hospitals, et cetera, and it will show you where all those locations are. I will admit, that database isn't as populated as we wish it was. I would say it's probably missing five hundred to a thousand roundabouts in the country currently, but every day, engineers are working on updating that database so people like us can go and look and see, hey, where's a similar roundabout near a park, near a assisted living center, that I can call up somebody and ask for a testimonial or see how that's I was intrigued last week. One of your staff members asked me, "Well, how many roundabouts are next to assisted living centers or rehabilitation centers?" And that was actually a new one for me. I'd heard schools, hospitals, all types of different land uses. So initially, I went out and started searching my own database and found these sites throughout the US. I put the question out on our national listserv where we have a hundred roundabout experts throughout the world. So I posed the question to that listserv, that email listserv, saying, "Hey, do y'all know of any roundabouts, singling roundabouts next to these types of facilities?" I did end up getting about three, at least three emails from different people around the US. One gentleman from Portland, Scott Batson, sent me a list of about eight of these types of uses. So we started making calls. We started calling the facility directors at these places. I actually talked to a few receptionists because the facility directors weren't there and said, "Hey, what's your experience with the adjacent roundabout? You know, do your patients use it? Do your patients use assistive walking devices when they use a roundabout?" So far, all the places we have called have said nothing but great things about the singling roundabout next to their facility. I'm looking for that negative comment. I'm going to keep calling every single one of these until I've gone down the entire list. I'm a research-minded person. I love these types of challenges, and that's something, to be honest, our industry is missing right now, is what is the data or the research on these types of facilities next to our roundabouts as well? So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that data back and, again, can share it with the city is additional consideration. So this is just one of those examples that was sent back by Scott there. That has a, as you can see on the top side of the screen, the senior center, there's a trail system there on the south side of the intersection, and they did confirm that their patients do cross that singling roundabout to cross over to the trail system and use that, different types of users, different types of abilities related to those pedestrians.
Is the traffic at that particular location similar to this intersection that we have over here on McElroy and Knowles?
It'll be less than twenty thousand typically with singling roundabouts. That's the ceiling for volumes. We don't have the traffic volume yet, but what we could do is reach out to Overland Park and see if they'd be willing to share their ADT there, the daily trips to enter that intersection, just as a comparison purpose. Yeah, certainly. This one's located in Bedford, Texas, along Cheeks Barger Road at Central Jackson. This is right on the city limits of Bedford and Colleyville. So there's the Elmford, or sorry, Elmcroft of Bedford there to the south of the roundabout itself. I'd called this facility, I believe it was last Friday, talked to the receptionist. The facility director wasn't there. I left a voicemail for the facility director. I haven't heard back yet. But as far as the receptionist, she had mentioned that, so far, they have glowing reviews for the roundabout. Didn't have anything really negative to say, as far as the experiences there at that roundabout. And there's also a trail system there, off to the west, along Cheeks Barger Road, on the south side of the road. I know I was supposed to talk fast and be done, so Mayor, I apologize, but just a few more slides. This is just an example of downtown Roanoke, again, related to heavy pedestrian use. One of the interesting topics when it comes to roundabouts is, the more pedestrians you have, the better yielding rate you actually get from motorists. That's an excerpt from NC-HRP Report 888. Kind of, you know, complies with, when we go to big cities, you know, like Chicago's or the Boston's, or wherever, you tend to see a lot more, I think, yielding rates than you may see in other types of areas. Not as much urban density that may be there. But again, we have a number of different types of examples of single-lane roundabouts, where they might be in high pedestrian areas. Again, college campuses are, have become pretty popular lately, as far as a use to place a single-lane roundabout. And then, back in Colleyville, this is a project that actually, I think, started back in 2007 or '08 with design and planning, Glated Pool Road. There's, there is a senior center there to the left of the screen. Top of the screen is the middle school along Pool Road, and then just south of that is the fire station there. So it's about 1,500 feet. The school is 1,500 feet from the center of the roundabout. And then specifically looking at the intersection, zooming in, Trent, if you can go to the next slide. This is what that intersection looks like. So I would say, this intersection probably handles several thousand vehicles more than what McElroy and Knowles is projected to be in 20 years, in that year 2040. They do have the enhanced push-button signage, so that when a student is walking to school, they can push that button, the strobe lights go off. And we have video of that, too, I believe, if you want to see the video. I will say, there are certain types of RFB devices that I appreciate, and some that I don't. So when it comes to this project, we'll be very selective about the type of device that is chosen. Some of these RFBs are very low-light LED. So in the day, when you press the button, as a motorist, you really don't see much. These examples in Colleyville are great. You can see these from hundreds of feet away. Again, we have some video that will kind of show that, that push button and what that light looks like when it, when it turns on. I'm sorry. Yeah, very well. I had my GoPro camera positioned about 30 feet in the air across the intersection, so it's probably, I don't know, 80 feet or 120 feet away. And it's pretty bright. The other reason I wanted to show this video is, there's some other treatments that we tend to see. Some work well, and some don't work well. That little sign in the center median there, center median area, that actually says, you know, yield to pedestrians, a state law. So that's another sign that's become popular in communities like Colleyville, just to reinforce the yield to pedestrian movement. And this is, again, another middle school in Colleyville. That's Bogart, Hall Johnson, sorry. Hall Johnson is that east-west roadway that comes across County Road 26. And then Bogart is that east-west roadway just south of the school. So the elementary school is just off the screen, or right on the edge of the screen, to the top-left. And that middle school is the one that's right next to that single-lane roundabout. This may be hard to see on your screen. There's roughly around 10 locations in the DFW area that have roundabouts adjacent to schools. Some of these are high schools, some are middle, some are, some are elementary schools. Again, around the country, we were keeping track up until about 2008, across the country, of how many roundabouts were near schools. And I think we're on our 14th version of the spreadsheet. And then finally, the group of engineers around the country, I think, just kind of gave up, because there was, started to be so many roundabouts near schools, became an effort where nobody really thought it was needed anymore to establish that spreadsheet or that track record of how, what, where roundabouts were next to schools, and how were they performing, at least from a safety standpoint. So trying to get back, and I think these are the last two slides that I'll, that I'll be on. One of the biggest things with any community is really public outreach. Mark has taught me that over the years, that, you know, this is really the impact, you know, the, the driver of safety in any community. Oftentimes, communities don't establish funding or budgets for public outreach. So it becomes, you know, up to somebody to champion it, whether they're in public works, or engineering, or the fire department, police department. I've worked with lots of different departments, communications departments in different cities, who have basically taken this on as their own initiative, just knowing that it's going to make their community safer. So again, things like the brochures and the flyers, that we can hand out or put on websites for people to look at. Public meetings, we do that, what we call an HO-scale roll plot, that's there on the bottom left. We actually have HO-scale vehicles that we place on that mat, and drive them around to teach children about pedestrian walkways or crosswalks, to teach drivers about how to yield correctly, et cetera. The middle bottom picture is taken in Saline, Michigan. This is a client of mine. We went up there for a driver's ed program, and actually, in painter's tape, put a roundabout and a signalized intersection in their gymnasium on the floor. And then we took the driver's ed classes, 80 students, and routed them through the, the roundabout as part of a training exercise, and then routed them through the, the traffic signals and other training exercise. And then gathered their questions, their comments, their thoughts. And a lot of the information was really positive, is, we actually heard from the PTA, that they showed the video that we took at the PTA meeting that they had later on. And, you know, the parents' reactions was kind of glowing. Part of the public outreach, I was likening it to the recycling program in the '80s. You know, these that I have right here, this roundabout educational activity book, was created by Bend, Oregon, years ago. We hand these out to middle schools in, in a strategic purpose, so they send it, or they bring it home to their parents or their guardians, and that they're actually teaching their parents how to drive roundabouts through this document. So similar to recycling, they taught the kids how to recycle, took it home to the parents, and taught the parents how to recycle in return. So this is another tool we can make available here in the city of Saginaw. Y'all be interested in it. I know with COVID, I can't really hand out the 30 copies that I have, but we can definitely get it in PDF format, put it on the website, if you'd be interested in that. And again, other types of things. I do Career Day at my daughter's school every year. So of course, every year revolves around roundabouts, no pun intended. You know, we get in the classrooms with the students, and we talk about roundabouts, mostly about safety, especially with crossing roundabouts as a pedestrian or bicyclist would. Just, again, to reinforce that message, that this type of intersection is new, it's different. Surprisingly, a lot of the students pick it up within about 30 seconds, and, and then they just play with the cars, because the cars are fun at that age. But overall, another strategic tool that we use in a public setting, just to get the word out there. With that, that's the material we had today. I know we've provided some other additional information, and at this time, want to open it up for any questions or discussion. Thank you.
Council questions? I'll start over here. Mayor?
I enjoyed that presentation, and I, I thought it was, pointed out some, some safety features that a lot of people wouldn't have thought were the case. I know a lot of people, when they hear the word roundabout, they might envision, I don't know if you're familiar with this area, but Harmon Road and 287 is a nightmare.
I know it well.
And you know, it's, it's, you know, faster traffic and coming off a highway. And, you know, I think that type of roundabout gives a bad impression of roundabouts as a whole. So they, you know, people tend to have a negative opinion about roundabouts. But I have walked from one side of the park to the other, probably thousands of times, since I've lived here for 14 years. And none, you know, it's already unsafe. It's not safe right now. It was not safe with a four-way stop. And I always felt like I had to really negotiate the time to make my run for it, you know? So, you know, I, I just think this would simplify it and make it actually safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent, do you have any of the videos? You can queue up maybe as well, just while we're enquoting it.
Sandy, go ahead.
I'll wait. I want to go last.
Okay. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah? Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
What you're trying to do, I believe, is like when I was either a freshman or sophomore in high school. They tried to interject the metric system into American high schools. And that went over real well. But that's what you're trying to teach us now, is you're trying to teach us things that have been in Europe for years, and now, all of a sudden, you're willing us to do it here. And I don't know how many times I've been through, over in the Alliance area, off of, is it Harmon? Yeah. There's two of them, almost right back to back. People don't know how to drive in those things. Yielding to the left is non-existent in most cases. But what concerns me more than anything is the pedestrian crossings in a roundabout. If you're going to try to cross, whether it's kids, moms with their kids, elderly people, you know, we don't walk as fast as a 20-year-old person does. You know, I thank God every morning when I get up and something doesn't hurt. But you're trying to get people to cross in a roundabout, and even though it may be 15 miles an hour, or whatever it's set at, are the people going to stop? I mean, Chief, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it state law that cars are supposed to stop for pedestrians in a crosswalk? Well, and you were talking about the flashy lights, the RRFDs, I believe you called them? Okay. We've got two of them down here on Bailey-Boswell. And the one at Knowles, I, I don't have enough fingers and toes to count on that I had been sitting at Knowles, and some kid pushed a button, whether it's on the Knowles side, or whether it's on the Walmart side. Those lights start going off, and they're bright. People don't stop. Right through it. Now, half the time, the kids don't even push the button. People aren't going to stop anyway. That's what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, certainly. If I can unpack a few of your comments, if you don't mind. I won't comment on the customization of going to metric in the US. I know that was a bad time for engineers as well. I don't know how many projects we had to convert.
Yeah, back in '42, when, yeah. But yes.
You know, I, I know the metric system didn't have to do with safety, and that's, that's really the biggest thing. Again, with Federal Highway Administration Office of Safety, you could call Hillary Aspermans and ask about this specific project, and she will tell you that a single-lane roundabout will be safer for pedestrians and bicyclists than the traffic signal.
I'm not arguing the fact of whether it's safer or not. In fact, I know it moves traffic quicker. I'm more concerned with pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to say, is that, you know, we have federal researchers, we have people that have been in the industry for 30 years. You know, again, back to my conversation with Lee Rodergerz on Monday, yesterday, is, you know, it's, the overwhelming evidence in the US right now shows us that there are no pedestrian issues at single-lane roundabouts, whatever context it is, whether it's a college campus, whether it's next to a school, next to a hospital. You know, we actually looked at the analysis today. We could have hundreds of pedestrians going through those crosswalk areas in a given peak hour, and still maintain the operational performance of the intersection itself. Again, assuming that they are yielding for pedestrians. But the key thing with, with all this, too, is, again, the enhanced devices that we're, we're proposing, I think I might actually skip it on one of the slides, but in combination with a raised crosswalk and an RFB, a study that was done in Oakland County, Michigan, actually showed they had nearly 100% yielding rates at a multi-lane roundabout with those two devices. So multi-lane roundabouts, I will say, have a far less chance of vehicles yielding than a single-lane roundabout does. You know, the multi-lane roundabout, you might get one of the drivers pulling up and yielding to the crosswalk, but you never know if that other driver is next to them. And that's one of the dangers of multi-lane roundabouts. If we were here tonight, discussing a proposed multi-lane roundabout, my message would be completely different. I would probably not be on board with this project, if there were going to be two approach lanes coming in, next to a park, with a care facility on the northeast corner, just because of the lack of data, you know, that exists at multi-lane roundabouts and safety right now. And the Department of Justice is involved, looking at all these enhanced devices at multi-lane roundabouts, to keep pedestrians safe. The research isn't focused on single-lane roundabouts, though, with pedestrians, again, because of some of the reasons I shared, with the slower speed, looking in one direction, shorter crossing distances. I will say, with slower walking speeds, the problem that we see at traffic signals is because that distance is so long. Sometimes those elderly, those disabled can't make it across the crosswalk in that phase. So then we have to look, you know, as engineers, what we want to look at is extending that ped time, so that pedestrian can cross from one corner to the other corner safely. And so we'll put a push button out there for those types of pedestrians, to lengthen that cycle to where they can safely cross within that time. The other side of that, though, is that it increases the delay at the overall intersection, because you're taking away time for vehicles that would be driving in opposing directions through the intersection. And that's one of the things that wasn't mentioned, and I heard it talked about during the finance session and taxing and everything else, is, you know, this kind of based on averages. The data that we show, as far as delays in peak hour for signals and roundabouts, for the signals, that's based on a best-case scenario. That's not a, that's not including if we, say, put in an exclusive pedestrian walk time, where all the lights are red, and we let the pedestrians cross each leg during that time. Or if we do what we call a different type of procedure, where without pedestrians to go first before the light turns green on, on a certain movement. And there's other things that we can do to steal time away from vehicles, to keep pedestrians safer at those types of intersections, that signalize intersections. But again, we can't protect the, the red light runner, or the right turner on red, when they don't see that pedestrian in the crosswalk. And unfortunately, that's when the severity, high severity collisions do occur at our intersections.
I got one more question, and it's kind of a several-part question. How wide are the lanes in a single-lane roundabout?
Typically, with entries, they're going to be somewhere between 17 and 19 feet, from face of curb to face of curb. And that really depends on the type of design vehicle that we need to get through there. So, you know, if you have a large truck, tractor-trailer combination, that, we want to basically look at the largest anticipated vehicle that needs to go through that intersection on any given day. And so that will dictate the needed width of the, both the entry, and then the circulating part of the roundabout is typically 20 feet from face of curb to face of curb.
The reason I ask is, Chief, how wide are your, can your fire trucks make it through there? If we put in a new fire station right down here, and you're heading west on McElroy, are you going to be able to go around that, roundy, roundy? I'm sorry, roundabout.
The fire truck's eight foot wide, and we commonly travel the Basswood roundabouts over there now. And comments from our staff, because we haven't had roundabouts in our city, they generally consider them a lot safer to travel. Generally, watching the other cars yielding, it's a much easier, we don't have to come to a complete stop at the intersection like we would a signaled intersection. So that provides us a little more speed going through there. It's a little faster to get through there. So we're in support of them.
I mean, you don't have any issues trying to negotiate a fire truck through?
No, with our, with our ladder truck, it depends on the traffic in the roundabout, but they generally have those drive-over curbs that we can, we can roll over if we need to have a little extra room.
And I've seen the cars do that over on Harmon.
And that's part of the engineering design process, too, is we'll actually ask the fire department for their spec, for their largest fire truck, and whether it's a ladder truck, et cetera. And we can run that through our software using what we call AutoTurn. So it'll run that vehicle through the roundabout to show, not only that where the wheels are going to be at, but also the overhang for the front of the truck, the side of the trucks, and the back of the truck, just to make sure, you know, we're not putting signs in the way, making sure the tires stay on pavement, because a lot of the things we hear from fire departments are, we don't want to use that three-inch mountable curb. We don't want to jostle our equipment, jostle our crew. The biggest thing we've heard from, from first responders really is, going through a traffic signal during a code three, is, you know, that unsureness that people in opposing movements perpendicular to you are actually going to stop. And that's what we've, you know, again, heard from the research in July, from a lot of the fire departments and police departments, is, that's mainly, or one of their concerns, at traffic signals, is, if they're trying to get through, assuming that the lanes aren't blocked, and that cars are moving out of the way, once they make it in the intersection, they're concerned next about those opposing vehicles moving through, you know, if the lights haven't changed over to stop that, that conflicting movement. So again, with roundabouts, really, that doesn't exist. You don't have that crossing, that T-bone effect, or likelihood, or possibility of occurring, just based on the natural tendency of counterclockwise movement and low-angle entries with roundabout.
Mayor Potem? Mr. Beasley? Gabe, I think you have some comments from Mr. Farr.
Yeah. These are comments from Councilmember Farr. I strongly support the use of a traffic circle to manage the intermittent peak hour spikes and low-flow, constant volumes of traffic at the intersection of McElroy and Knowles. My support is based on the knowledge that the McElroy Development Corridor from City Hall to Old Decatur is only 60% developed, and that once 100% developed, there is potential for the intersection to see as many as 10,000 articulations in a single day. Once habituated, the traffic circle maximizes field of vision and reduces the number of individual calculations needed for each articulation, which reduces the overall number of opportunities for human error to cause an accident. My support of the traffic circle is conditioned upon three supporting developments. Means of pedestrian movement from north to south that eliminates all interaction between pedestrian and vehicle. This will require either a pedestrian overpass or underpass near the existing low-water crossing. A continuous sidewalk on the east side of Knowles from Longhorn to Bowes. Lighted and raised east-west pedestrian crossings located at Knowles-Kings Brook Lane and Knowles-Grace Lane.
Thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Mr. Farr. Yes, Mayor? Yes, Mayor?
I just wanted to say I appreciated Mr. Von Austin's comment.
Correct, that's perfect.
In the beginning, that, because I meant to say this myself, but he took my comment away from me, is that every single person in this room, and every single person watching, I'm quite sure their goal is safety. So, you know, what we wanna do is pick the solution that is the safest, and I believe that would be the roundabout.
Cindy, you wanna go last, or you want me to go first?
Okay. I had a couple of things. So, I'm a big fan of roundabouts, as I've learned more about them. Like, folks, I did not know much about them till recently. I've even driven on one in Europe as well, on the left side of the road, which was an experience. But what I've seen in roundabouts is, and what we've learned, is the traffic flows better. I do like that, especially at this very, very busy intersection, and several of them in the city. I like the fact, what we've seen about the shorter distances for pedestrians to travel, I would be a big, a big fan of flashing lights and maybe even a raised grade as well for a little bit extra safety, I think that would help. But I think they would be, as we've seen here, safer, safer than our current lights, because, as we mentioned, people can run these lights on a four-way stop, they can run them easy as anything. So I like that the configuration of roundabout forces folks to slow down a little bit and encourages a much slower speed. And also, long-term for the city, it's less maintenance and less cost for the city, so I think it's a win-win all the way around. So I would be in favor. Thank you.
Start me off with a softball.
Hi. I'll try to be gentle. One of the beauties about going last is some of my questions were answered. First of all, I love roundabouts. I worked in Europe for a while, I drove several of them every day, I drove a single lane, two lane, three lane, oh my gosh, that was a nightmare, but I survived. You know, you commented earlier that, and like I said, I really do like roundabouts, but I just don't think this particular location, roundabout is the right solution. I believe that we do need to move traffic through that intersection. And like Mary, I walk the park, my husband and I ride our bicycles through the park. Crossing McElroy has never really been a big challenge, neither has Knolls, so I've never feared for my life in that respect. I've also driven through that intersection during peak hours. But that being said, you commented earlier on one of your slides that roundabouts have 30% approval, and then after about a year or so, it's up to about 70%. I guarantee you, those over on Longhorn and Murray Creek don't have that kind of popularity with the people that I've talked to. As a council member, I feel like I need to talk to the citizens, so rather than giving people my name and my phone number, I go out walking quite a bit, I talk to people, you know, hey, how are things in the city, you know? What do you like, don't like? So I'm out talking to people all the time, and my phone has been exploding today. I've had to charge it up a couple times. Nor am I in a polling booth at this point in time, so I'm not in here, you know, making my decision, yes or no, for this. But I do want to talk about a lot of the concerns that I hear from the people that I talk to. Very, 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 very few, maybe three of all the people that I talk to are in favor of a roundabout at this intersection, and they're very specific about this intersection at Knolls and McElroy. As it's been talked about several times tonight, it's the pedestrian safety. A lot of people use the park, and we have, was it Amberwood, and I can't remember what the subdivision is on the south. But anyway, those two subdivisions on the east side of Knolls access the park quite a bit, including my granddaughter. So that's, you know, quite a bit of a concern for me. I know kids ride their bicycles to school, they have to cross Knolls to get to Willow Creek. And, again, kids crossing very busy streets, at least with a traffic light, those cars are stopped. And I don't know if you've noticed or not, but not only am I old, I'm short, and I've walked, I've walked a lot in major cities, I've crossed four or five-lane streets in major cities at traffic lights, and even though the little timer has gone off, nobody has ever run me over, and nobody's ever tried to advance through that intersection if people are in those crosswalks. But cars are stopped, and I think it does give you an opportunity to have a little more comfort in crossing. The people that were wanting to build the nursing home on the northeast corner specifically stated they did not want the traffic circle here, next to their facility. So I'm hoping that if it does go in, that they're still willing to build there. They said they did not want it.
Mr. Mayor? If I could address that comment, I think that was related to the dedication of right-of-way. So, they haven't gone through plating yet, and I think we can negotiate that, they're aware of this discussion, that it's ongoing. It wasn't related to facts based on safety, to my knowledge, I think it was related to the right-of-way dedication, as evidenced in the presentation, several facilities that are similar.
And I will add to that, their civil plans were approved this week, and they're anxious to get their building permit, which has been issued, so.
So, the question is, what is right-of-way dedication? It's the public land that is given for a public improvement, so in this case, a street or a roundabout, the adjacent property owner has to give the city land to do improvements, public improvements like sidewalks, roundabouts, pedestrian crosswalks, that sort of thing. I'm not an engineer, is that okay for the engineers in the audience? Okay, just wanted to check.
Yeah, but that was a big one for me, because I do remember them saying that they did not want that roundabout when they were talking to us.
And certainly, we'd be able to provide some of the information from those facilities we're calling around the country, too, if they'd wanna talk to those folks as well, just to get their experience, any advice they may have as well, from those different facilities.
And like I said, you know, I'm very concerned for the safety, the little RRFBs that you were talking about. About three weeks ago, I was in Keller, and I pushed one of those little buttons, and it was very, very bright. It was very bright, there were lights flashing all over the place, I thought I'd won the jackpot. But alas, I didn't, and I just stood there on the side of the road and watched cars just zip right through. Didn't slow down, didn't stop.
And that was a roundabout location?
It was near a roundabout location.
Okay, so like a mid-block crossing type thing?
It was set back a little bit. But, yeah, I just watched them fly through.
And that's?
So I just waited for a space, and then, you know, we hit the button again and walked across the street.
Yeah, and that's?
And again, we lived to tell about it, but...
And that's part of what I didn't mention with roundabouts, too, is it's really, you know, the pedestrian is kind of in control of that crossing as well, you know, it's pedestrian looking for that gap in traffic, but also, you know, we never wanna assume at any type of intersection that a vehicle's gonna stop for us. You know, even at a traffic signal, when you say all cars stop, there's always cars moving in a traffic signal, you know, whether they're making right turns, through movements or left turns or U-turns.
That's true, but if cars are stopped, they normally don't move if there's a pedestrian nearby.
Yeah, again, the problem we see with, I hate to single out traffic signals, but, you know, if somebody's looking to their left when they're trying to make a right turn, they're waiting for that gap in traffic, or they're looking to see a vehicle stopped, and all of a sudden, they start making that right turn, turn their head, and there's a pedestrian there. So that's one of the common occurrences, not really common, but when there is a crash with a pedestrian involved at a traffic signal, that is one of the contributing factors, where somebody's made that right turn and just haven't turned their head quickly enough to see that pedestrian, even though people may be stopped throughout the intersection during the all-green time, which may be a couple seconds, you know, there's still those vehicles. Drivers are not courteous these days, I'll admit that, sorry, it's another opinion, but, again, it's going back to AAA, you know, they used to put these messages on our stop signs at every intersection, at least up in the north where this individual's from, that said, you know, courtesy is safety. We lack courtesy as drivers. I wouldn't say all of us, but, you know, probably all of us are guilty of, you know, running a stop sign or a red light or doing something not quite safe enough throughout our lifetime, and it's a mistake, we all make mistakes. And, again, kind of the point of this is, you know, analyze the mistakes that are made at one type of intersection versus the other, and what the consequences of those mistakes may be. You know, at signals, again, they seem to be or tend to be at faster speed where those higher severity type of issues occur, as opposed to the roundabout where you, you know, it's a traffic calming device that slows vehicles, yet it's still efficient enough to get vehicles through.
Yeah, I don't know if you notice this, too, but we're not that far from the Speedway, and people think we're still on the Speedway this far away.
Yeah, well, and that's another advantage with a...
Again, I've watched them over at, what you're talking about, over at Harmon, and, I mean, they don't care. You know, they've got that little bump, you know, deuce of hazard, let's go.
Yeah, so anybody coming through Knolls, you know, if a roundabout's there, they're gonna be called by the roundabout, and they're gonna have to slow down to 15, 20 miles per hour, or else they're gonna end up in a central island, or they're gonna end up off the roadway. You know, so as a driver, we're conditioning them to slowing down for the intersection as opposed to a traffic signal. If that's a green light, northbound, southbound, you know, and all of a sudden, they're 200 feet away and it turns from green to amber, you know, how many people floor it instead of actually stopping? So that's...
My brother. I'll rat him out.
And that's always another concern, too, is, again, it's a mistake made by a driver, and then hopefully there's not a pedestrian or bicyclist or a vehicle that's in their path when that vehicle enters the intersection incorrectly and when they're not supposed to.
I understand, but again, and I can't disagree with anything that you said in your presentation, I just, I'm just uncomfortable with the roundabout at this intersection. I'm looking at one of the documents that you sent to me, I'm looking at the NC HRP, 672, Chapter 5, Page 19, and it's talking about pedestrian accidents, pedestrian risk. And I guess the one that concerned me most, because we are putting the nursing home and the long- and short-term care center here, it says, "It should be clarified that there has been no specific research performed on older drivers, older pedestrians, older bicyclists," all of which I fit, "at roundabouts." And the page was cut off, and it says, "It should also be noted that visually impaired pedestrians are not provided with audible cues." You know, so I'm a little concerned about, you know, the fact that, you know, they're printing out all of this data, and, you know, I see research estimates, research estimates on a lot of these reports, and I don't see what appears to be actual data. And we had a ton of information dumped on us, and I've made no secret that I've been opposed to this roundabout for a very, very, very long time. And I'm a little disappointed that all of this information was delivered to us, you know, 5:30 last night, they started coming into my mailbox, but I didn't even look at my email till about 10 o'clock this morning. So I didn't have the time to go through and look at all of the information. I kinda skimmed through a lot of PDFs and files that appeared to be maybe something that I was trying to find information on. But I have a lot of concerns, and my neighbors, my friends, people on the other side of town, on the other side of the tracks are very, very concerned about this, and they're not happy. And, you know, if you read the comments, I'd say 90%, of them are against the roundabouts, or this roundabout, not against roundabouts. And I think we need to listen to our citizens if we're not gonna sit down and take that extra time to educate them and make them comfortable with what's going to be done. And I feel like we're rushing into this project because, ooh, it's all new and shiny, and we don't need to do that.
Yeah, I think, I can relate to the documents sent to you, but I would say that, you know, it's, obviously, it's impossible for us to canvass an entire community, we would, you know, sometimes we try to do that on certain things. I always go back to the vocal majority always seems to be against the roundabout to start, and it's the people that are pro-roundabout that seem to sit on the sidelines. And, you know, part of that, I think, is that, you know, they don't wanna, infrastructure project to divide a community, you know, it's never good to think about an intersection as a way of, you know, my opinion matters more than yours, or my data matters more than yours, or the evidence matters more than yours. You know, really, again, it's, I try to fall back on the evidence I've been provided, the facts that I've been given, the people that I call in our industry to talk about these types of projects here in the U.S., like Lee Rodergerts, that was mentioned on Facebook, and ask him for his professional opinion, who's, you know, seen this in other contexts, in other locations, and...
And I can appreciate that, but, again, we weren't provided enough data to be able to, to be able to talk to these people, all I could do was take their concerns, and, you know...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Gabe.
If I might add, I'll accept responsibility on behalf of our friends at Kimmel Horn, so they finished the presentation to incorporate a lot of the feedback that we saw on social media. You may have received a few emails as well, so it was my direction to wait until those were all addressed from the concerns that we had heard before we got that out, so that it was sent out to you just shortly. The presentation that you just heard is out on our website, Keith put it out before we started, as well as on social media. So I don't wanna let that reflect on Kimmel Horn. They took their time to address all the comments that were submitted today.
And I appreciate that quite a bit, but, again, there's been a lot of concern about the roundabout for a very, very, very long time, and I don't think the city has done their part to address the concerns. And I'm not talking about five or 10 people, I'm talking about 50 or more people that I have talked to. And, like I said, 90% of the people I talk to are not in favor of this roundabout. And that's a pretty high number. You know, a lot of things, you know, when I'm out talking with folks, it's generally split 50/50, like the bridge, you know? But I've never seen this many people against any one particular design like I have over the last several months.
And I guess, do you wanna let Mark?
Mayor, Mr. Council, thanks for having us in tonight. When I looked on Facebook, there were two comments that really stuck out to me. One was in Texas, there's nothing to prepare kids, we teach them how to drive roundabouts, and the second was there's a fire hall, firehouse nearby. And those two are probably the most common concerns, and they're equivalent to, as a young grandfather of a couple of school-age kids, you know, I know first-hand some of the safety risks that kids have to face when they go to parks and schools. This is a package deal. I would recommend you not pass an motion simply to approve the use of roundabouts, but that you package it with insurance. Have I a car, have I insurance? Insurance is the provision of additional devices that facilitate the crossing safely, and use our toolbox, it's deep. And education, education for seniors, how to walk, how to take a walker through a roundabout, how to teach school age children to reach parks, and to get from schools across. But this is essentially, I've known a lot of council meetings tonight, I never just recommend roundabouts, it's a package. The education has to be part of the infrastructure investment. For you to benefit, you know, from the congestion rate, from the safety benefits of roundabouts, and the change that has to take place, you need the education to help with it. It's strangely, the cheapest part of the project costs, but it's the one most overlooked.
And I have to agree with you there, and I... And, and I have to agree with you there. And I think the city has failed our citizens in that respect. And I think they failed them miserably on this project.
I, I think some of the education Mark's talking about is more of, you know, prior to construction, is how do you safely navigate the roundabout? You know, and I, I do apologize that you got the, the materials-
I know, it's true. I agree. And that's part of the thing that's missing, is educating. This lady over here has a question, is educating our public.
Well, we, so, so here are two blocks for education. Is, is waiting the stage before the roundabout is built. There's waiting, waits the stage and demonstrate, you know, how to walk and bike through a roundabout. And there were some slides that showed high school children, high school age, young drivers, that kind of thing. So there's a lot that you can do to get out, get out ahead of this. You know, when I did these presentations 15 years ago, all we can do is point to Europe and say, hey, it's working over there. And council will say, well, we'll give it a try here. Now that you've got hundreds of agencies behind you with variable pedestrian involvement, crash evidence, and we've been looking for it. And, and there's lots of testimonies that, that say, you're going to like this. You're going to be okay. It, it's, it's a leak, because you don't have, you know, if you go around the country nearby, you might see a few. But that's, that's not second. You want to know that it's going to work for second. So you, the education and the fact is, is part of the infrastructure investment.
But before the design goes in, I think our people need to be educated. I think our people need to have that feeling that this is going to be safe.
That's part of what the, the purpose of this meeting was tonight, was to start the educational process. And should we start it or maybe? But this is a start. This is definitely a start. And-
Right, but I understand-
I know, I know Ms. Stewart has questions, but I want to get, make sure we're done with Mr. Van Alstine first. Any other, I'm sorry, any, any other questions for him before we sit him down?
Yeah, I had one more and I just lost it. It came in my head and I didn't write it down.
Well, if it comes to you, we'll, we'll bring it back. Let's-
Okay.
Let me let you sit down. I want to talk here for Mrs. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Of course, I appreciate it very much.
Any other folk that want to speak as well? But Ms. Stewart turned in a request. So you can come up there and talk if you want to, ma'am. Please.
Kelly Stewart, 404 Mustang Drive. There was a driver's ed class at the senior center, and they did go over roundabouts with several, with, I spoke to several, I didn't get in. I didn't sign up early enough. I really wanted my husband to go. But they were very pleased at what they covered about the roundabout. And especially, they covered the new old Decatur with that bike lane and all that stuff. They covered a lot of things. I don't know who made the presentation, but it was done at the log cabin. So we might need to-
That's great. No, that's good.
So somebody has done something. It wasn't all about roundabouts, but they included that. And the people understood a little bit better what was going on.
Okay. Well, that's great. That's a great idea.
My question, I, I think I heard from both of you that eventually are, the intersection's going to be so heavy that it's not going to be a one-lane roundabout anymore?
Yeah, I have to, I have to-
And how is that going to work? How do you add lanes without being very expensive?
Yeah, so it's a problem right there. It's really just meaning that as you're heading east though, a right turn, you, right slip lane, a right fielding lane, that's all we needed for us to do.
And that's, that's in the, we're talking in the future, right, Dana?
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty plus years out.
Okay, so-
It attracts ever reaches the wrong point, which-
Okay, I just heard, you know, we're going to need more lanes. And I was like, then do it to begin with.
Right. That's a good point.
Well, do I have to press that?
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing I really didn't get to mention while I was up here about this type of project is, the mayor actually mentioned that I didn't, you know, maintenance is another consideration and all these things, too, that we look at with sustainability. Traffic signals need to be re-timed. They need signal maintenance on the conductors, the electrical wiring, the cabinets, the controllers. During inclement weather, traffic signals can go out and lose power, and they're in flash mode until you get somebody out there to fix it. Those, those are some of the other things that we look at. But overall, really, you know, traffic is what drives these types of decisions initially when we look at intersections like this. A single lane roundabout can handle up to about 20,000 vehicles a day is, is the threshold that we use, the ceiling that we use. So this single lane roundabout without that extra eastbound right turn bypass would handle right about 20,000 vehicles a day. The projections that we have here based on year 2040, which is our design year, are right around, I think, between 14,000, 15,000 vehicles a day. So there's actually additional capacity that we show in the peak period. And again, this is the peak one hour of the morning and the peak one hour of the afternoon or evening that we look at as traffic engineers to size these intersections appropriately. So the other 22 hours of the day, there's essentially extra capacity loaded into that intersection. Again, these are based on traffic engineers' projections of traffic. And as we know with COVID and with other things, is traffic volumes can be all over the place. Compared to February to April, there's about a 50, 40 to 50% reduction of traffic on the roadways across the nation, according to Enric's data that we pulled. So obviously, as you all have been driving probably the last few months, you may have noticed a slight uptick now. Vehicles are starting to get back on the road again. We're starting to see about 90 to 95% of that same traffic that we had a year ago today. But again, you know, you know, this type of intersection, we are, because of that eastbound approach was right borderline as far as capacity, we added this additional graphic just to show how the additional right turns could be handled eastbound if the, the intersection were to need that extra capacity. Typically, it's a 15-minute period, though, of the peak hour. So maybe looking at a 7:15 to 7:30 AM timeframe where that additional lane is needed. So then it becomes a question as a city in the future, is if we spend the money to add a little bit of extra capacity, if it's ever needed at that point.
Great. And one other thing that I just recall, we have not discussed, is the potential for a, a bridge over the trail, a pedestrian bridge. You want to discuss that, Gabe or, or Dana? About the, that is a potential for the future?
You know, yeah, Dana can address the specifics, but ultimately, another in the corridor, what factors in, and you're well aware, in a large rain event, the west, west of the intersection that we've been talking about is not passable. So there's water. We have a gate that we put across to prevent vehicular traffic when, when it's not safe. For whatever reason, when people see standing water, they still try to cross. Ultimately, at some point in the future, once McLaRoe is built to its ultimate capacity, that's got to be corrected. I believe it's got to be brought up to grade, which would allow for a number of, of options for pedestrians, an at-grade crossing, you know, a bridge or a, an underpass or something, because, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian, people enjoying walking dogs and morning walks that go from south to north and vice versa.
Yeah, so on the screen, you can see we looked at that, like, if we were to, we have to improve ultimately McLaRoe at that creek crossing, because like Gabe said, we have to close it when a major rain event goes. So one option we can, we looked at was if we can make that a bridge crossing rather than a culvert crossing, and you could fit a trail underneath it. So yeah, that is something we looked at, something that could be done in the future consideration to the west. So this is a rough graphic showing, like, the bridge limits would be like in that reddish color. And the yellow would be the trail that would go underneath the bridge. And that would connect the parks, and you wouldn't have to walk through the intersection. So Trent, you have the next slide. So this is a local example. This is in Ulyss, off 121 on the west side of the street. There's that Glade Parks development. If you guys go to Ulyss, there's a bunch of different new retail over there. There's a road that runs north-south there, Rio Grande, and there's a trail system that goes underneath there and across 121. So the picture on the lower right is showing somewhat, like, the main creek is in the middle span of the bridge, but the, the trail would be elevated a little bit, and you could actually walk or bike underneath it. So is, is something to consider as a future potential crossing with the bridge.
Can't believe Dana wants me to build another bridge. You've got a lot of nerve, young lady.
Hey, this was not my idea.
No, it is a good idea. I, I agree. I don't mean to make a lot of it. Mayor, yes, ma'am.
And that may be a bridge that I might be willing to support.
Oh, right.
Not me.
Certainly don't want to-
But, but that isn't what I was going to say. I, I believe that the negative response from people is an emotional response. And I believe it's based on, you know, the fact that roundabouts to a lot of people have a negative connotation anyway. And I also doubt that very many of them, if any, realized it would be a one-lane. You know, they did. So, and I also hope that all of them are watching, because I do feel like many of them would have, would change their mind based on the presentation, understanding that really this will enhance the safety at that intersection.
Mr. Mayor, if I might recommend, you know, and this is all in preparation for likely future bond projects, I, we didn't get into this level of detail with safety analysis with the bond committee. You all appointed the bond committee to do hard work and to make recommendations. I think we have a couple bond committee members in the audience. So I might recommend that we send this topic back to them for review, and they can, you know, talk with Dana and staff and everyone, and maybe come back with some thoughts.
You know, my, my thought was initially that, you know, we don't have enough folks here to make a decision tonight. Mr. Beasley had to leave early, and Mr. Farr is not here. I would like to get more information from them. I think this is a good educational process, and I appreciate Kimley Horn. I know us a lot, and I appreciate you all. I really do. I think this is a good step. I would like to take this off and have folks ask more questions, get more information, have more time to review stuff. Cindy brought up a good point about the, the timing. So I think we can give a little more time. There's no need to rush into this. There's not a, a pressing need to, to jump quickly on this. We can make the right decision. So let's, let's take this offline, as they say. We can get more information and come back here and, whenever the future date is, once we're ready and have more information to discuss again, and when we have a full, a full council. I, I would like to have Mr. Beasley, Mr. Farr involved as well. So let's do that. I don't want to beat this anymore tonight. But I do thank you all. I think we've got some good information out, and folks have answered a lot of questions. As we said, this is a, a step one of an educational process to see how we want to go and what direction we want to move, so.
But I remembered my question.
Yeah, oh, go ahead. Yes, ma'am. No, it's not too late.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. One of the things that I notice especially about Texas drivers is, you know, the, the majority of them are courteous people. And a lot of times, even sitting up here at the racetrack, people trying to get out of the racetrack or even Fuel City, QT, a lot of places, when traffic is backed up, and, and people are stopped at traffic lights and things, there's a lot of, okay, hey, come on in, come on in. One car comes, merges into the traffic, and then the second car goes, and then the car behind him lets somebody else come out. That scenario. And I know trying to get on to Knowles in the morning is a pain from either direction. But again, cars are stopped and they're allowing people in onto the, onto the main roadway. If we put that traffic circle in, I just don't see that happening as much anymore, just because traffic's going to be constantly moving. So that's another, that was the other concern that I had, and the questions that were asked of me.
Yeah, sure. Based on the existing traffic, say, that's, that we gathered in 2019 and running the models through, I think, I, off the top of my head, I don't have the exact numbers, but, you know, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Dana.
Yeah, I will say, typically, we design these things for the next 20 years. Again, we don't want to design a project and have it fail at five years or 10 years. So when we look at the traffic data, it's more for 20 years out than it is the construction year. That's one of the first focuses of it.
Right. But like Mary pointed out, you have to have a starting point with the, the tool for our financial budgets and stuff like that. You have to start somewhere.
So based on the existing traffic data that we had from 2019, and again, this is before the pandemic, normal traffic conditions, if a single round, single lane roundabout were to be there with, with that traffic that was there last year at the intersection, during the morning, we're looking at about nine seconds of average vehicle delay, and that's per each approach. So that's the control delay. That's the amount of time it basically takes for a vehicle to come to the yield point on average and be, you know, stopped before they enter the roundabout. And the PMP gets a little bit lower. It's about eight seconds of delay, average delay. And the worst legs are, are really the, the eastbound movement in the morning and the, the westbound movement at night. So it's, you know, these numbers, what we call level of service, level of service is kind of a, it's almost like a report card. You know, we use A through F. A is great. You know, F is failing. It's over congested. It's not moving. So within the AMP peak, that traffic would be flowing in a level of service A. And then the PMP could also be level, following in a level of service A. So from that standpoint, like you said, traffic keeps moving. And, and that's one of the, the key things with roundabouts is really, inside the intersection, we can have up to probably four to five, maybe six vehicles moving at any given time continuously throughout that peak period, whether it's 15 minutes or an hour, you know, as opposed to, you know, with a traffic signal or some other type of intersection control. We always have those times where everybody might be stopped for a couple of seconds. And then you, as a driver, may be sitting there at a red light, waiting for 45, 60, sometimes even 90 seconds before you're allowed to go.
We wait longer than that with the trains.
That's true.
It's 45 minutes or-
It's hard to deal with the trains at any intersection. They're great separated. But yeah, it's so, I guess to answer your question, really, you know, we're looking at very minimal delay with the traffic volumes that were last year. When we look 20 years out, that goes up to a level of service C in the AMP peak and a level of service C in the PMP. Typically, D, what we call a level of service D or better, is what we aim for as traffic engineers at any intersection over the design life of the project. And again, this is just one of those check marks that we, as traffic engineers, look at to make sure that this doesn't need a multi-lane roundabout, or it doesn't need three-lane entries like you've encountered before. You know, this doesn't need to be an Arc de Triomphe. You know, it's not a massive wide intersection. So to that extent, it's, you know, strategically, we actually tried to reduce the circle as much as possible to decrease the complexity of having multiple vehicles enter side by side. Because again, if I was here tonight talking about a multi-lane roundabout, my recommendation would be completely different at this location, just due to the fact that multiple lanes, multiple drivers. I have videos walking as a pedestrian where I've almost been hit at a multi-lane crosswalk before, because the first vehicle in that lane near me stopped, but that second vehicle in the lane next to that driver wasn't going to stop until they saw me at the last minute. And luckily, they did stop. So again, the context, the, the fact that it's a single lane roundabout to me, is again reinforcing just the operations work, the litmus test of the cost work. I don't know if it was mentioned, but the cost of the ultimate roundabout is similar to the ultimate traffic signal, I believe, within $100,000 or about even.
Does it include cross, or, or, that means-
And raised crosswalks. And Jay, I think Cindy was also talking about the side streets along Knowles, having a gap to get onto Knowles. Was that part of your question? Or was it just entering the intersection?
Well, the side streets, yeah.
Right.
The divisions coming along the Knowles.
So I think, I mean, we probably don't need to get too deep into it, but there's a platooning effect that Jay could probably speak about.
Yeah, with, I mean, with traffic signals, is traffic engineers, what we're doing is we're controlling movements of traffic, and we're strategically stopping them in groups or what commonly called wolf packs. So, you know, when you get to a red light, there's vehicles that will pull up behind you, and then somebody will pull up behind them. Strategically, we're going to time that signal to where we try to get those eight, 10, 12 vehicles through the green light, and then it turns back to red and starts stacking more vehicles possibly there. So the impact of that is, is you get more and more vehicles waiting at that red light, you can block adjacent driveways, adjacent intersections. With roundabouts, we tend to see those queues, what we call them, you know, the vehicles that are stacked waiting in the two to three range, instead of the eight to 12 to 15 to 20, like you may see at a traffic signal. So that's another thing with operations and adjacent development that we look at, is making sure that, you know, we, we'll run a queuing analysis as well, just to show that, hey, there might be two to three vehicles stacked at any given time on this approach. But we want to make sure there's not the 15 to 20 that can block an adjacent driveway.
Can I ask, sorry, is the intention for the McLaRoe and Knowles to be single-lane each way of, of, on the foundation of all of this?
No, McLaRoe will be, you know, that's graphic, McLaRoe on the west of Knowles will be a four-lane, divided. We can locate our levels in four lanes of, it'll be a paper layout along that intersection. And then east side, between Knowles and Lor, it was like a three-lane section.
I mean, that seems to me like that would impact traffic negatively to have them merge prior to getting on this single lane roundabout.
Yeah, this, this really goes into corridor- Yeah, this, this really goes into corridor capacity. So there's a concept that Leaf Arston published in 1993. Leaf, I like to tell people is my intellectual grandfather. He owned Arston Roundabout Engineering, who Mark Lenters took over for Leaf in the early 2000s. But Leaf's basically theory was you create wide nodes, which are wide intersections, which are roundabouts, and then you narrow the nodes, which are the corridors that connect the intersections. That being that, you know, typically with any type of four lane corridor you see anywhere, you're going to need a signalized intersection like this that has dedicated left turns, a through lane and a right turn as a minimum. So you have three lanes approaching that intersection. With roundabouts, you can actually handle the same amount of capacity, which is a single entry lane. So what we do with those types of corridors is we will have a merge scenario and it's more of a zipper merge. We'll have vehicles coming together in one line of cars instead of two prior to the roundabout. And again, it depends on the control upstream of that, you know, whether typically with a signal, you'll get those platoons, those vehicles traveling together, possibly in two adjacent lanes. As drivers get conditioned to knowing that merge is there, they tend to either automatically merge or they'll get over at the previous intersection into the correct lane that is continuous.
The merge would actually be a lane drop because on the east side of the intersection, there's only one lane heading towards Main Street. And so regardless of if it's a signal or roundabout, that would, there would may have to be one less lane once they go through the intersection, according to the new MTP that we passed last year for this year.
And that may actually be an opportunity to look at the corridor, look at that connector and see if it actually needs two lanes. You know, there may be, would be an opportunity. I'm sorry. I think it was slightly over capacity now that I remember. It was 1.04 or something, 4% over capacity.
Thank you.
This just occurred to me. This just occurred to me. You know, with the new fire station, the last thing we want to see is them coming out of that fire station onto McLaRoe with a backup. And with the roundabout, there would be less chance of a backup and if there was one, it would be much, much less. So.
Yeah, I would say during the.
That's another safety thing that would be, most people thought fire, you know, fire station near a roundabout bad, but we've heard, no, good. And then I think the lack of backup would even be another enhancement for those fire trucks being able to get to their destination more quickly.
Yeah, I can't speak for the fire department or, you know, we, we have the data from July that we're going to share next week across the country with other engineers and other first responders, but that is one of the comments that we received is especially during the peak period, morning or night, you will get those backups at the signal and then it's a matter of the drivers being savvy enough to navigate their way through in response. So yeah, that is, that is a good point, another, another issue that we do encounter.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just one last request before we're finished this evening. We do need to give Kim Lee Horn some direction related to the northern section of Knowles because they're further along in design. So that would be the Bowes, Bowes and Knowles intersection.
Okay. We didn't discuss that hardly at all. We went by it, but we didn't ask questions about it. So does anybody have concerns? So this is the WJ Bowes. This is that one and that's a, again, a one lane roundabout proposed. At that location, anybody have concerns?
I would be glad because I almost get hit there all the time.
I don't personally, but I have read that people do, so I do feel like if you're going to continue with the roundabout in that location, the same kind of public outreach is going to be needed.
You're right. Education has to be a part of this, absolutely.
And I am very for the raised walks, which seems sort of like a speed bump to me and I know Saginaw is so against speed bumps, but I think that's a very important safety factor here.
That and the flashing lights, I think would help, absolutely. So, Mayor, yes, ma'am.
As far as the Bowes, Knowles, I drive back and forth across that a lot too, and I've never seen a pedestrian, ever.
Because there's no sidewalks.
But still, there, it's not a pedestrian problem.
No, I mean, I just heard from people that they would love to be able to walk from Saginaw Springs to the park, but there's no sidewalks.
I see what you're saying.
So that might be different if there were sidewalks.
I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
And the people that I've talked to aren't as concerned about that one because you don't have the walking population there. The, the concern is over here at Knowles and McLaRoe. So if we do a training, I think we really need to focus on the safety at that particular situation.
Yeah, I think, I mean, thank you. I think we're going to proceed with, as with the roundabout, was my hearing consensus tonight, but I think I agree that we need to do some kind of additional public outreach education. We'll come up with some ideas to be able to present those to the city staff and then we can share those with you. I don't think that we're planning to go to construction anytime soon on this. We're just trying to get the design finished so that we can.
It's all a design question. We don't have, we don't have money for construction.
Right. So I think that's where we just want to make sure that we're not stopped for six to eight months. We want to continue with the design.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Gabe, anything else? All right, let's move on. 8:36, reconvene back into regular session. Then again, at 8:36, we will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087, discussion regarding economic development negotiations. So 8:36, we are into executive session. We will return to adjourn. We will return to adjourn.